I think we can go ahead and get started. I'll just review the agenda and then we'll do introductions. By the way, for those of you who don't know me, Alan Milneck, I'm the Public Health Director and Health Officer for Clark County. Better talk into this microphone. The goals of this retreat, the agenda are basically to get for the Board of Health members and the Public Health Advisory Council members to get to know each other, then review the roles and responsibilities of our Public Health Department here, then the roles and responsibilities and structure of the Public Health Advisory Council and Board of Health, and then discuss opportunities moving forward in terms of working together. So hopefully that sounds acceptable. I know we had the planning committee working on that. So great. So let's go ahead and do introductions.
I'm Sue Marshall. I represent District Five, the northern half of the county, and am serving as Chair this year. I also served on the Public Health Advisory Council for a couple of years. Happy to be here.
I'm Glenn Young, Clark County Council, District One, which is the west half of Vancouver, and I serve as alternate on the Public Health Advisory Council.
Scott Johnson, the Emergency Manager for Clark Regional Emergency Services Agency. I'm on the Public Health Advisory Council, representing CRESSA, which is 911, call-taking, EMS dispatching, and emergency management.
Good morning. Jordan Bogie, Senior Policy Analyst. I support the County Council and County Manager's Office.
Good morning. Jeff Harbison, Administrative Services Director for Clark County Public Health.
Good morning. Dana Nguyen, I'm the Investigation and Response Director at Clark County Public Health.
Good morning. My name is Andrea Pruitt. I'm the Community Health Director at Clark County Public Health.
Good morning. I'm Lori Schott. I'm on the FAC and also representing the county and the social services. I'm with YWCA Clark County.
Good morning. I'm Michael Watkins. I'm an enrolled Rosebud Sioux tribal member, and I'm the tribal manager for the Kowalski Indian Tribe.
Mark Collier, I'm on the FAC, and I represent septic installers, designers, and maintenance people.
Hi, I'm Brian Scarlett Pfizer. I'm the Public Health Advisory Council's representative from Legacy Hospital, and I'm the Infection Preventionist at Legacy, Sam McCree.
Good morning, everyone. Wolf Fuentes, Clark County Council, District Three, so the better half of Vancouver.
Matt Little, I'm a new Clark County Councilor out of Kamis, Washeugul. It's District Four.
Tracy Fernandez, I'm the Public Health Advisory Council Representative from Peace Health.
I think we have everybody here on the agenda, so it'll give us more time to interact. We have another FAC member who just joined. Want to introduce yourself?
Click on your microphone.
Hi, my name is Ashley. I'm the Public Health Student Representative.
Right. Thank you. So the first part of the agenda is really to talk about the roles and responsibilities of the Clark County Public Health Department, and to actually, well, start by talking about some of the foundational principles for public health. And I'm going to talk about a couple of things. One is the core functions of public health, which I think it's, I don't know if we have it on the, if we want to go to the next slide. Okay. So we're gonna, yeah, let's go ahead and review this. So we're going to talk about the 10 essential services and core functions related to our roles, foundational public health services, and what Clark County Public Health can bring to FAC and Board of Health. Then we have some, given the roles of FAC and Board of Health and in policy, we're going to participate in some, just some sample cases of how policy discussions may occur, then review the roles and responsibilities of FAC and the Board of Health, and then discuss opportunities for working together and ensure how FAC recommendations are heard by the Board of Health. So anybody have any additions or subtractions or questions about that? Hearing none, I'm gonna proceed. So I'm going to go over first the core functions. Those were set up by the Institute of Medicine, I think goes back to 1988, but the core functions of public health are related to, and this is, let's go ahead and get to the next slide because I think it's on there. So you can see around the edge of the circle, and I don't know how well you can all see this, but the core functions set by the Institute of Medicine are assessment, policy development, and assurance. And the bottom line about this in terms of, so public health has a role in terms of assessing the health of the community. And one of the things I want to mention is that I'm going to talk about how we're different than healthcare, because our role as a Public Health Department is around community health and improving community health. We certainly work close with the healthcare system where the focus is on taking care of patients and individual health, and certainly they're related, but the core functions of public health are around improving the health of our community. So that includes assessment, and I'm going to go into that in a moment here when we talk about the essential services that are related to that function, assessing the health of the community, developing policy, and we don't, as the health department, we don't set policy, but we certainly make recommendations based on assessment, and then assurance, and ensuring that, you know, the services, the workforce, what we, the policies implemented should apologies, policies actually improves, improves public health. And just the, in terms of these core functions, I don't know, in terms of the role of public health, I don't know if you're familiar with the river metaphor, but you're going to hear me yak about it for a minute here. So, and this illustrates the, I don't have any graphics with it, but I'll try to describe it as best I can, but illustrates the difference between what we do in community health versus healthcare. So imagine a river flowing down, and you're standing on the sidelines, and there's people floating, drowning, floating down the river and drowning, and having all kinds of problems. Certainly, the healthcare system is pulling people out, one at a time, or as many people as they can, and there are still bodies floating down this river and drowning. The public health folks, certainly we like to assist pulling people out and saving them, but we're, our job is to also walk upstream, and you may have heard about upstream public health, but walk upstream, and we discover that there's a cliff, and people are falling into the river in the first place, and there's not really good fencing at the top of the cliff, and you can imagine that the fencing represents what we call social determinants of health. So things like housing, income, wealth, food access, including access to healthcare, those are all things that if they're not in place, the barrier or the weakness at the top of the cliff is a problem, and people fall in. So our job is to work upstream and keep people from falling into that metaphorical river in the first place. The other thing you think about that cliff is that there may be multiple populations or multiple groups of people at the cliff, and the barriers are different for, for different groups of people. So, for example, you might have BIPOC, People of Color community at part of that cliff, and the, and the protections there or the social determinants there are not as strong as, as white populations might experience, and that's why we have issues around healthcare disparities and inequities, if that makes any sense. Our job is to really work on that, and that's where public health comes in. So I just wanted to go over the, around assessment, policy development, and assurance. There are the essential services, which I believe was put forward first by the CDC, and then I'll talk about foundational public health services in Washington, but essential public health service number one is in the top right corner there, under assessment, and it's really to monitor population health status and factors that influence health. And if you go onto our website, you can see that we have a lot of data, and we do a lot of assessments. That includes getting quantitative data, measuring, measuring things like birth records, death records, surveys, you know, like a behavioral risk factor survey, the Healthy Youth Survey, but also involves assessing, you know, qualitative assessment as well, which could be focus groups, key informant interviews. Essential public health services two is to diagnose, investigate, diagnose, and address health problems and hazards affecting the population, and I'm sure you're aware of the work we do in that, including our work around, for example, notifiable conditions, disease outbreaks, and things like that. So that's part of the assessment. I don't know if that folks have any questions, or if my team wants to add anything to what I'm already saying. You're all good? You'll correct me if I'm wrong. Okay. Okay. Then we get down to the policy development phase, and again, policy development includes things like communication. We have a robust communications team, and that, that team informs not only our department, but informs the Board of Health, informs FAC, informs the community, informs community partners, and the more our community partners know and our, and our, the residents of our county know about health issues, the more engaged they were in supporting development of, of health policy to improve health. We can't do our work alone, so essential services number four, government can't do this alone, is to work with community partners, and, and you can see by the composition of FAC, we have some essential community partners here right now as part of our FAC. We, essential public health services five is to create, champion, and implement policies, plans, and laws that impact health. We don't set the policy. Our Board of Health sets the policy, but we make recommendations to the Board of Health, and also working with the Board of Health and working with our senior policy analyst here. We also communicate with our legislative delegation and work on promoting policies that our board and we consider essential for improving community health here. Essential service number six is to utilize legal and regulatory actions designed to improve and protect the public's health, and that's more about, you know, once these statutes, rules are passed, they, it's not really policy development, this is more about implementing policy, and we can talk about how we use our regulatory, our statutory authority. I would point out that, and we'll go through the, I think we'll go through the RCWs and the WACS a little bit later in terms of the roles of FAC, Board of Health, and our department, but when we use our regulatory function, for example, if we have to require exclusion from school for, for communicable disease like measles, or we have to issue isolation for TB patients, or, or quarantine for close contacts of, for example, susceptible close contacts of measles cases, we generally use the least restrictive option we can. We have the authority, but generally, in terms of my years of practice, we get voluntary, voluntary compliance or voluntary support works a lot better than issuing orders, but that's, we do, we do have the authority to implement policy in that way, and that's, that's essential service number six. And then in terms of the assurance function that I described earlier, we have a role to ensure an effective system that enables equitable access to individual services and care needed to be healthy. And I think a good example of that is something we're going to be presenting to the Board of Health next month, as well as FAC, and that's our concerns right now about the situation with prenatal care and delivery access right now, which has become a significant issue for the health of our population in Clark County. You're also maybe aware that, you know, we're involved in discussions around the issue around, oh, it's happening with Columbia River Mental Health, which has just come up, and the concern about, right now, I'm really concerned about the potential that 800 methadone clients will lose services, and I'm concerned about the impact on that, on the, on our healthcare system, as well as on the patients. So we have a role to play in that, and that's something we work with our community partners on, and I'm sure, you know, Legacy and Peace Health are very concerned about that situation right now. We have a role in building our diverse and skilled workforce. Our workforce is, most of our, and Jeff can add this, most of our budget, the vast majority of it is on our workforce. That's how we get the work done, and having a skilled and diverse workforce, and a workforce, hopefully that looks like the community we're providing services to, is really essential in assuring that we can continue to improve community health. Essential public health services nine is to improve and innovate public health functions through ongoing evaluation, research, and continuous quality improvement. We're developing a robust performance management system in our department, and we certainly look for, in terms of innovation, we look to work, for example, with, we have, you know, do some grant-related work, we have been involved in research, and building a strong relationship with our academic partners is essential. And then essential services, public health services number 10 is maintaining a strong organizational infrastructure for public health, and we're fortunate that we are in an estate and a county where there is support for having a strong and organizational infrastructure for public health, and we'll be working, certainly discussing with the legislature, hopefully the continued funding for foundational public health services. So I'm actually optimistic in terms of recent developments with the Senate and the House. So anyway, that's essential service number, number 10. Does anybody have any questions or anything? I could give you more detail about this.
Dr. Milneck, I know that this was in, you know, the topic of conversation, but with recent developments with Columbia River Mental Health, what can you tell us a little bit about how the county can support, you know, patients who were provided services by Columbia River Mental Health and now are without them? I know that North Star, according to their website, will remain open, but for how long? We don't know, and that's the entity that provides methadone to, I think you mentioned 800 folks?
I just heard it, I actually was on a call this morning. I had to leave the call early, but the latest update I heard from, from Columbia River Mental Health is that you're, you're correct, North Star for now will remain open. They're, they're cutting some of their, looks like some of their other services, but North Star will remain open. This is, this is a situation, and that we can't, an example I use, Clark County Public Health can't do it alone. I mean, we don't even provide these kinds of services. We need to, and I'm working with DD, Siler, and Community Services as well, we need to basically convene with our healthcare partners, as well as the managed care organizations. I mean, these are, these are the patients that the managed care, these are managed care organization patients, they're Molina patients, Community Health Plan of Washington patients, and they're capitated to provide these services. So we're going to be having a lot of discussions with them, but not something that we can do all alone, but hopefully we can play somewhat of a convener role in that. It, I don't know if any of our team has any other, I'm very concerned. I mean, if we have, as a physician, I'm really concerned, because methadone withdrawal is tougher than heroin withdrawal, and it can go, it's a long-acting opioid, so the withdrawal can go on a lot longer than it does with shorter-acting opioids, and thinking about 800 people, I don't know if there are any pregnant people on methadone, because that's a treatment, methadone is a treatment for pregnant women who are, you know, who are opioid-dependent. Having, having 800 folks go into withdrawal and the impact on clinics, the emergency room, the hospitals, is just really frightening. So DOH is involved, I mean, this is also a conversation with DOH and the Healthcare Authority, because the Healthcare Authority has the contracts with the, with the managed care organizations as well, so.
And there's also the risk, of course, not just folks who could potentially be withdrawing from methadone, but other people that have received services who may relapse, right? Because if I understand correctly, based on the article most of us probably read over the last 24 hours, I think they service about 5,000 folks a year, and so there's a lot of folks that are dependent on, on, you know, psychiatry and psychol, whatever services they provide.
We've got a large number of psychiatric patients, and both, both for mental health issues as well as behavioral health issues. I don't know how many clients they have on other medications for opiate use disorder, I don't know the numbers on that, but certainly concerned about those patients as well, as well as their mental health patients. But yeah, the immediate thing that I worried about was the methadone withdrawal, but you are correct, there's, this is a significant, be a significant impact to our community Any other, we got a lot of work to do with our healthcare system, and I'm hoping, I'm actually hoping that over time, we have a stronger connection between the State Department of Health and the Healthcare Authority as well.
I guess it just leads to one question or concern that if there's one entity that really we rely on to provide these essential services, that we may want to look at, you know, a more diffuse, decentralized model, so if any part of the system goes down, there's, there's backups for it, but right now, I feel like we're just hanging out.
I think that's the value of not only having this retreat, but talking about the relationship between FAC and Board of Health, because these are, these are the policy discussions. I completely agree that relying on one provider for these essential services, or for a large portion of them, puts the community at risk. And maybe what we want to discuss about today, for, instead of the examples I provided. Any other questions about the essential health, public health services? Okay. So should we move on to foundational public health services? So, and you can see around the, so these were, were developed by partnership between, certainly between the, our state health department, DOH, our Association of Local Public Health Officials and local health departments, the tribes, and the State Board of Health, and we've, over the last several years, the state, we're, I mean, we're really fortunate about this, because the state has committed a significant amount of funding, several hun, a few hundred million dollars. We're short, we did an assessment, was it Burke? We had a consultant come in, and we did an assessment, was it six more years ago? More than that. Jeff, do you remember the, the date? Was it 10 years ago?
I want to say 2016, maybe?
Yeah. So we did an assessment, public health has always been underfunded, and it's not just an issue in Washington. Actually, it's better funded in Washington than some other states, but it's, it's traditionally been underfunded. So we had an assessment done, and we had a consultant come in. It was pretty extensive, and if I remember correctly, we've, we, we discovered that we really needed 450 million bi, biannually, every two years, to actually shore it up. Now, over the last few years, this legislature's been committing more and more funding to this, and I think we're up to 300-something. We're still short, but this made a difference of about $7 million for our, our department, so that we, that we didn't have a number of years ago. We're still underfunded, but we're in a better position. I'm, I'm on the National Association of County and City Health Officials Board, and I get to interact with my counterparts in other states, and I was just on a call with a, with a Public Health Director from Maryland. Our, our federal funding is about 12 and a half percent of our budget, and you all know that federal funding is, you know, we're concerned about that. My colleague in Maryland, their, their proportion of federal funding is 30%. So depending on where you go, if there's a federal funding cut, we're, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be great for us, but we're in better shape than we could be if we didn't have the state contributing all the funding. So, so these, these foundational public health services are really kind of related to the essential services. They're a bit more, a little bit more categorical and descriptive, but, and you can see where they fit in around the circumference there. They do fit into the essential services, or they relate to them, as well as the, as well as the core functions. So the core foundational public health services include communicable disease control, and you're aware of that, chronic disease and injury prevention. A lot of that includes our assessment function, remember, assessment, policy development, and assurance. So that really, a lot of the work we do around chronic disease and injury is to really assess the health status of the population, and then make recommendations to all of you around what we can be doing around that. A maternal child and, maternal child and family health is another core public health service, foundational public health service, access to clinical care, environmental public health, vital records is our birth and death records. So these are the things that, that we're funded for. We also have some discretionary funding that we can imply as we need it. I don't know if anybody, any of you have any other, anything to add?
Dr. Milneck?
Yeah.
Just a real quick question on, on the funding. I'm curious, when you mentioned, you know, we receive about 12 and a half percent funding from the federal government and other jurisdictions, maybe up to 30. What is leading to that? Is it that we are providing a larger share of local dollars to this, or is it that they are getting a larger sum of federal dollars? What, what leads to that?
Well, my suspicion is we get a much larger proportion of state funding than these other jurisdictions get. If you look at us
So would that imply?
Five years ago, before we increased, what was, Jeff could tell you what the proportion was.
Actually, if you go back even further, when we had a WIC program, I'm talking 2008, 2009, it was about a third, a third, a third between federal, state, and local.
So we were about a third back then.
So is that implying essentially that they're underfunding their system? If they have a real high percentage of federal?
We're fortunate in Washington that our legislature understood that we were underfunded and gave us, we're very fortunate here.
Is any of that funding in jeopardy with what's going on in the state right now? Budget discussions?
Yes. So the governor's budget, the governor's budget cut out 59 million biennium for FPHS, which would have been a significant hit to us, but as you know, the governor puts the budget out there, but the Senate and the House budget out there, but the Senate and the House get involved. The Senate came up with a, and he did not want a revenue package, if I remember correctly, but the Senate met and they have a revenue package. I think it provides, was it 17 million?
Billion.
Yeah, 17 billion statewide. Thank you. And the House, I think, came up with one for 13 and a half billion dollars, if I remember correctly. So now they all get to commiserate about it. And depending on where the legislature ends up and what the governor signs, I'm reasonably optimistic that we're going to get most, if not all of our FPHS But that's why we need, I'm glad we're here. I mean, you guys, our Board of Health, our Public Health Advisory Council, you can communicate with, with legislators in the governor's office about that.
The foundational public health dollars, they came down fairly recently, the last few years. And I think it's was, there's these broad categories, but it seemed like for a lot of local public health districts, it was a windfall.
Yes. We actually started, I think it was state fiscal year 21, we had $375,000 of this grant funding. And across three successive state fiscal years, that jumped to 6.99 million for us per, per, per year. So from 375,000 to 7 million roughly.
Yeah, the six, the 7 million is per year.
Per year.
It's 14 million over two years, or 13.8.
I was just kind of curious, what percentage of the budget comes from fees? I know environmental health is mostly supported by fees, but just kind of curious.
Yeah, I think environmental public health fees, it's around 21% of our revenue budget. Don't quote me exactly, but doing the math in my head, that's going to be pretty close.
But environmental public health is also the largest division in our department.
It is by far the largest. Yes, it is.
So I don't know, what's the next slide? Cameron? Oh, good. Okay. So I just wanted to show you our, this is a statute around public health, foundational public health services. So you can see the, the, when I put that little circle, that, you know, the last slide talked about items one through six, but this is where our number seven is cross-cutting. It includes not only services, but cross-cutting capabilities. They're called foundational, they're part of foundational public health services, but they're founded, they're, they're called capabilities. And that includes assess, you know, these core functions, assessing the, the health of our population, policy development and support. And then you could actually think that some of these other roles related to the assurance function, part, community partnership development, business competencies with, there's no mission, if there's no margin, communications and emergency planning. And so those are capabilities that are part of foundational public health services. Is that the bottom of the slide there, Mallory? Or I can't tell. Is there anything under? Yeah. Okay. So in, I think we're up to this, this comes now. So, so what I wanted to, and please feel free to ask questions, but we're, in terms of our roles and the roles of our local health department in supporting FAC and Board of Health and the, and the work that you do, including setting policy, this is how we can support you. One is providing data and health assessment, that, that core function. And I put links there, if we could send the slideshow to everybody, but there are links to our website and I invite you, if you haven't already spent some time on our website. We have data on Clark County, the health status of our population, including health conditions. You can see physical and mental distress, overall well-being by geography. So there are maps, you can look at this within the county. Climate Health Explorer, we're certainly concerned around climate change and the risk of our population to both heat, air, well, all three, air quality and flood risk. And we completed, Counselor Marshall was one of our volunteers, a heat mapping survey. We had a whole bunch of volunteers, was it 50 or more volunteers? I'm trying to remember who, who drove around the county last July with heat sensors on their car on a hot day in July. And we actually have data down to a real granular level of heat risk within, all over the county, throughout the county. We've got data on maternal and child health, including birth outcomes. I would, I would recommend you go to see Raising Clark County as well, but we've got data on, you know, childcare, children and youth with special healthcare needs, breastfeeding, built environment and safety, park access. These are all social determinants, I might add, you know, park access, transportation, environmental hazards. Those are all social determinants of health. And we've got, as well as the risk of heat exposure, those are all social determinants. We have that. And of course, there's another section on social determinants there, including housing, education, financial security. I can read the list, but we have this available on our, on our site. Child and adult fatalities, we have, we have data on, including on suicide. We have the drug overdose dashboard. We also have a link to the state dashboards. Healthy Youth Survey, I believe we presented to you on that, but a number of health issues as well as behavioral health issues affecting, the Healthy Youth Survey is done every two years of sixth, eighth, 10th and 12th graders. It not only has health conditions on it, but it's also got issues around suicide ideation, suicide attempts, information like that. So it's got both behavioral health as well as physical health data on it. It also has drug use, tobacco use, vaping, stuff like that on it as well. And then of course, we have got communicable disease data. We're looking really closely at our immunization data. Back when we had our measles outbreak in 2019, our immunization rates in K through 12, if I remember, and in kindergarten, we're in the 80s. For measles, herd immunity, you need 95% or above. And we had that outbreak. It got, our immunization rates increased, but during the height of the pandemic, they began to decrease again. I believe we're in the lower 90s. So we're, I go to sleep thinking about these numbers. I think we're around 92%. Is that about right, Dana?
For kindergarteners with MMR, we're currently at 89.9.
Eighty-nine. That's really bad news.
Yeah. You need what, 95% for herd immunity?
Ninety-five. Yeah, measles is perhaps the most, maybe right up there as the most contagious viral respiratory transmission disease we have. Okay, what's the next slide? So we have data. We've done our, also on our website, we've got our community health assessment. That includes those, some of the main findings that we had are access to healthcare. We're seeing that with prenatal care right now, housing, education, safety, mental health and navigating resources. And you can see that social determinants of health figure are highly there. And then we have a community health improvement plan that we're working on and underlying everything else. And we're doubling down on this is our work around racial equity and civic engagement. And actually, I think in the, in that first slide around essential public health services, equity was right at the center because when you look at what's driving a lot of the health issues, both locally, locally, state and nationally, equity is a huge piece of that. But the community health improvement plan includes that as well as so, the other social determinants of education and mental health, community connection and care. But we can, we have that information and we can involve Board of Health and FAC in terms of helping with our community health improvement plan. I don't know, anybody want to add anything? Or am I covering everything? Okay. My team? Okay.
One thing that we've heard from some people in the community is what actually is being done related to racial equity and if there's metrics. And I know it was declared that systemic racism is a public health issue. And I think the community would like to hear more about what, what actually we're, we're able to do in that realm.
Yeah, that's a great question. Actually, it was in fall of 2020 that the Board of Health declared racism is a public health crisis. So we certainly have some data here, but we're, we have a consultant and we are doing a deep dive into racial equity in our department right now. Where that includes, we have a core team that's working on it with a consultant. We're, we're doing, we're taking a look at all our, our, our data, including our workforce data, our community data, our policies, procedures, all our, all of our internal documents, including recruitment, you know, policies around that. We're doing, we've done some key informant interviews with our staff, including our BIPOC staff, staff survey. And we're also doing some work, some, we'll be doing work with focus groups, I believe, and key informant interviews with key community partners as well as, so we're, we're taking a look at that, but we have a lot more work to do and we'll be, we'll be sharing this with the board. I don't know if my team wants to add anything to that You want, Andrea, do you have something to add or? Okay. And we'll, we'll be keeping you posted on the progress for that.
Chair, what are some preliminary ideas of what we could potentially do and action items to help in that area? Any ideas?
In, in terms of our racial equity work? That is a really good question. And my team have any, Andrea, you want to chime in?
Yes. So while racial equity and systemic and institutional racism are identified as part of foundational work in public health practice, it's an everybody commitment all of the time. So there are frameworks that exist for state and local governments to adopt health and all policies approach that center commitments and decision-making criteria surrounding racial equity. And so in terms of actionable things that you as council members can do would be to consider the evaluation and adoption of those principles as part of all of your decision-making, including when you're a part of your Board of Health role, and then generally as throughout your council member duties day to day. So it shouldn't matter where you are or what you're doing in your role. If you're centering, how is racism operating here and asking yourself a series of questions and applying that framework and criteria for decision-making, you can very quickly improve through policymaking and decisions, how you can more equitably resource and distribute our improved health and community well-being. And so we can send you those resources, if that's something that you would be interested in looking at.
Okay, thank you. So essentially putting an equity filter in front of all our decision-making, which we should probably be doing for all decisions.
For all decisions, yes.
Thank you.
And so that includes engaging with your community, ensuring that you have diverse and robust representation and that your, the feedback that you're getting is really representative of all of the communities that live, work, play and worship in this county. And so there's, there's things that you can do across data collection, convening, decision-making to ensure that you are using all of the tools available to get to the best possible decision, the most equitable decision, given any set of processes and things that you want to achieve.
So just to add to that, anything we bring to you, you can see that it's the groundwater. So when we talk about prenatal care, I can virtually guarantee, well, more than virtually, I can guarantee that there are equity issues underlying prenatal care access. And we know there are equity issues underlying birth outcomes as well. When we present things and we talk about issues that are affecting our community, we're committed to, you know, sharing that information with you and then having you make decisions, like Andrea says, with a racial equity lens can be really helpful in addressing this. I suspect that some of the issues that are going on with, you know, behavioral health right now in the county have equity concerns as well in terms of access. I mean, we're talking about the Medicaid population, so.
And I would also add that it's the system, you have to systematize your approach. I think that the county across some of its departments, you can start to see evidence of where you're using those foundational principles in practice and you're collecting information to support good decision-making in terms of policymaking. So the comprehensive planning process and the Environmental Justice Coalition is an excellent example of that in practice. How do you take that model when and where possible and extend that to other decision-making opportunities? And so there's lots of different strategies embedded under that structure. It's a set of questions. It's, it's how you govern yourself and then the, the principles of practice on a day-to-day basis as much as possible. So then you can get that scaled impact rather than department to department or issue to issue. So, so it's a shift in practice as well.
Just quick, go ahead. Sorry. Oh, did you say thank you? Okay. You know, and this may be happening, but to me, when I, when I look at this issue and I look at, you know, racially disparate outcomes, it seems to me like what we should be doing is we should be identifying where you're seeing these disparate outcomes and brainstorming and going to the community itself and finding out what is leading to these disparities. And, and once you gather that information, that's how you can direct your policy to try to, you know, tackle some of those challenges that we're experiencing. I don't know if that's how we're looking at it or not.
I'll share. This is a really good example, I think, for how we are doing this. We have really low immunization rates in our school-aged children in Clark County. We know inherently that that is mostly true for our Russian and Ukrainian populations. So we actually have a consultant that's working with us to work with that community to, in a trusting way, get information from them to better understand why they have such serious vaccine hesitancy. Because we don't want to, we know it's a problem, but we can't really identify it like with data. So to your point, get, go to the community and find out from them why it's a problem. That's what we're actively doing right now. So it's kind of exciting.
That's perfect. I love that answer. And, and you know, because it's not as simple as it always seems. A lot of these issues can be cultural. Just, you know, how, I mean, I was raised a certain way and, and a lot of the ways that I was raised, they exist in my family now as I'm a parent. So yeah, a lot of it is cultural and, and it's, and it can be really tricky to identify those. And it can be even touchier trying to address them as well. So it's a challenging.
Absolutely. And we could actually address it incorrectly and cause harm unintentionally, which is what we wanted to avoid. So it's actually been a really good experience for our community. And also it pulls in our healthcare providers, that community and, and public health. It's, it's very large, like attachment. It's great. We're really excited. We're really excited.
It's a really good point. We can't do our work without community partnerships, including partnerships with our BIPOC community partners as well. So we're working on that. Other questions? We may have a lot more time for interaction. Wow. What's the next slide, Valerie? Oh. This is another, these are the last piece about how we can support both FAC and Board of Health and, and actually Counselor Young's point with community input. So we can't do our work without community input. So based on what we look at, we can bring issue briefs and policy recommendations to FAC and Board of Health. And then once policy is implemented, we can report back to you about how it's going. And that's the assurance role as well as when we talked about policy development and assurance. That may be the last slide of this first section or I should, oh, okay, that's the next session, next section. Should we move on or we're, we're way ahead of? I didn't want to give a long didactic thing anyway, because I don't think you all want to hear me drone on, so. We gotta say something, Jordan?
Dr. Melnick, yeah, if I could just ask a quick question. I, I think it might be interesting to hear a little bit more about how, so, you know, we've had the conversation about how public health does its work out in the community, how we're engaging with community partners, how we're trying to bring data into bear. What does that look like then? And maybe this is kind of where we're, where we're going a little bit, but like the process for bringing these issues to Board of Health and to FAC. Can you talk a little bit more about, A, what that looks like currently? And then I think it might be interesting, and I know this is going to be part of the discussion, about how we can work better together. But I think, you know, understanding a little bit of the landscape of like how these policy recommendations and the data you're collecting then filters up to, to FAC and Board of Health.
That is a great question, and I did not include it in the agenda, but I think we need to discuss that. So thank you for bringing that up. So we're still talking about the role of Clark County Public Health and bringing things. And historically, we've come up with agendas and thought about bringing things to you, like next month will be prenatal care. I don't know, we'd done some stuff around opioids last year, but I think it would be, I think it'd be great to hear from the Board of Health, in fact, about what they want to hear from us as well. If we, and maybe, Jordan, that's you and me working, us working closer together to have that communication, because we don't want to, I mean, we certainly put an agenda together based on what we think of the, of the, like, like prenatal care next month and opioids last year. And we actually had some plans to do the next session on working with our opioid providers, bringing them in, opioid treatment providers. But having more of an interaction with FAC and the Board of Health in terms of asking us for stuff, I think would be real, I don't, if you want to have that discussion now, I'm happy to hear from folks.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll leave that to the group, but I think just something I've noticed that I, you know, because the Board of Health, you know, last year, there were some questions around specific data, right? I think we, we did talk like opioids and things like that where Council, Board of Health, they say, oh, we're interested in these particular topics. Can you bring us data? And I know public health has had some, you know, different data that they say, oh, we want to really make council aware of, you know, vaccination rates or things like that. But just building that relationship and how that sort of becomes a dynamic process. And again, like, you know, I don't know, from, from my perspective, you know, just mostly supporting the council, I don't know if the Board of Health and FAC are talking and communicating in terms of developing like a shared priority list. And I know this is part of what we're doing here today, but I think just thinking about how do we build these relationships where when there are things coming up on the ground, can we filter that up to the policy level so that that can then come back down and there's a little bit more of a flow of information? And just how we, how we make those connections and how we get what's happening on the ground and everyone here has their expertise about what they're seeing? And how do we then bring that so that policymakers are actively engaged in that process and providing public health with what you need and that public health is also keeping our policymakers and advisory board folks aware of some of these issues that are, you know, percolating in the community that maybe they should be keeping an eye on as well?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. So that's a large part of the afternoon, the later discussion. But, you know, FAC has 21 members that represent broad section of the community. There's consumer members, there's members from the regulated industry, there are healthcare partners, we have a long list. And there are community members, there, there, like, they, we have student members, a youth member as well that can help us if we, that's the whole point of today, I think, is to talk about those working relationships. And, you know, FAC can actually bring their concerns and concerns around potential policy decisions to the Board of Health as well. So I'm hoping that we have a discussion about that instead of linear, one-way make it, have the connections go in both directions, if that makes sense. Is that where you're getting at? Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly kind of what I was curious about.
Yeah, and I'd like to encourage that as well. I think you have a, a board here that is very receptive to getting things sent to us to proactively work on. So I just want to let you know that we, we are looking for ways to help our community in these ways. And I know we're getting to this later, but I'd like to open up a discussion about the whole structure of who makes decisions and, and how, what the history of that is. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that later, but I'm just wondering if there's a way to improve the way that we work collaboratively as a team to make these decisions where you all are experts and we're more politicians. So I want to make sure that we have the expert's voice as part of our decisions, but that's later. I know at least we're, we're going to start talking about that around noon, so.
I'm happy to change the, modify the agenda if you want to get into that sooner, but.
I'm not quite ready to get into that, but I'd like to get into that. But I still, I want to linger a little bit more on policy and identification of issues in the community and the role that equity is playing into. Because I think it would be good if collectively we could identify what are the, let's say, five major things that we want to have some impact on and, and then use the equity lens and the decision-making tools and going out to the community and have some metrics of are we making any achievement in that area? So immunization is a good example of that. Prenatal care, I think there's some metrics you could definitely develop around that. But to really position ourselves in a much more proactive way, so where we understand the stressors in the community that are, that are having the major impact on their health and, and proactively go after those and have some measurements so we know we're making a difference rather than look at things just at single issue by single issue. I think if there's broader categories and probably multiple issues under each one.
Valerie, could you put up the slide with the community health improvement plan on it? Up the other direction. Up, I think that's it. The next slide. I just wanted to throw that up there because the community health assessment and the community health improvement plan, the community health assessment identified, and again, these are upstream issues, identified some of the basic concerns and then, and then the improvement plan is related to that. But it's hard, you know, we can give you data, for example, on opioid use and, but really to get a handle on, on concerns around opioids, we have to address housing issues as well. You know, we can think of the direction that one causes the other. I mean, I think, you know, a lot of people believe, well, if you're, if you're, if you have a substance use disorder, you're, you're less likely to get, have housing. But I would point out that if you don't have housing, you're more likely to be able, you know, we're talking about people being in recovery, but if you lose housing, it's difficult to be in recovery. So unless we address several of these social determinants, you know, upstream issues, we miss the boat.
Let's do that. Let's address several of them in order to make a difference. And I think fundamental to all of these is income. People don't have the income. If, if, if they had the income, most of these could be resolved.
Yeah. Valerie, could you do me a favor and put that, that bar high slide up for me? Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah. I'm going to offer up a different visual for this group to use when considering how to adopt policy across some of these more complex system issues that we see sustaining over periods of years and oftentimes decades. We have information from 2005, 2009 stating access to care and challenges with navigating systems as issues then. So what are we not doing or what do we need to be doing to solve that issue? And so measuring change over time with some of these very complex system issues and Counselor Chair Marshall, what you just spoke to about income. Income and wealth are proxies for access and income is a social determinant that's connected to institutional and systemic racism. So can you scroll? There's a graphic about a third of the way down that page. There you go. And we can share this afterward, but in terms of when Dr. Melnick's talking about downstream and upstream work that we all do, we all exist in this continuum as individuals in our personal lives as well as across multiple institutional and government roles. So when public health is engaging upstream towards social inequities, we are trying to, through governance and policymaking, realign the systems such that the downstream health inequities don't exist anymore. The reason why we have issues with access to care and housing is through decades worth of policy decisions that are difficult to course correct with monetary interventions locally. So this is something that I find incredibly helpful when we're thinking about what our interventions are going to be, where are we doing work along the continuum with different groups and populations, with different needs across different phases of the life course, right? Our population who's currently pregnant and struggling with prenatal access to care, not everyone is struggling with the same access issues. People with private payer coverage and employer-sponsored health plans can get access to prenatal care. Our Apple Health members are struggling to get their needs met, right? And so to qualify for Apple Health, you have to be income eligible and experiencing poverty for the most part. So using that as an example, why does that issue exist and how do you correct it, right? In the state of Washington, we have five managed care organizations. Four out of the five are private for-profit institutions. So what ends up happening is varying degrees of strategies to restrict utilization of care, maintain costs, and the goal is to achieve equality. So if that doesn't happen, then what? You can extend this exact same example to what's happening to some extent with Columbia River Mental Health. It's not just access to prenatal care, it's access to mental health, behavioral health, housing supports. And so the strategies that we can use in terms of policy interventions, making a policy isn't the only policy power that we have. There are a series of strategies we can draw down on, authorize technical groups to work together, better steward the existing financial resources we do have. We have a lot of different funding streams that aren't cross-referenced against each other for their use. So I, for the system issues, we have to think more strategically in terms of contribution versus attribution. No single policy will solve any of the public health issues that we face. So it has to be multidisciplinary and we have to have shared goals and objectives and criteria and work together towards system change or else we'll just spin and stay stuck, which is what we see locally a lot of the time.
So how do we do that? Or are there broad categories that we could identify to be, and do that multi-approach and look at multiple policies that can move the needle in, in one way or another? Because, you know, just looking at like homelessness, I know there's a struggle, there's a more need along a whole spectrum of ways to intervene. And where do you intervene? What can you do to be preventative? Are we, are we making differences? Maybe we're making differences with some populations, but it's not clear to me what our end goal is or that everybody agrees with whatever the end goal may be. And I think fundamentally, it'll be difficult to get to a point of identifying in, in any of these topics, what the end goal might be and how to get there. But that's, that's the struggle that we have to pursue, I think. That's step one.
So the other, you know, we're going to talk about the statutory role of Board of Health and FAC a little bit later, but there's also limitations to what the Board of Health can do or what FAC can do in, in addressing these. But there is an advocacy role also. In, in your positions, you have connections with legislators, governor's office, you know, WAC and all that. So there are, there are things that you can still do, even though you, I mean, it's hard for us to solve all of these problems.
But being the county council as well, and you know, I also think, you know, we're in the midst of this comprehensive plan and, you know, there's big sweeping things that we can influence. And I think guidance and understanding where our priorities are and where we want to get to, we can, we can use all the information and data that you have to help, help steer us in making those bigger, more broader decisions.
I totally agree. This is a great conversation. Are there metrics, goals that we already have established on some of these public health needs? Or do we need to establish some like immunization rates, treatment rates, homelessness numbers? Are those goals that we have as a, as a group here? And, and could those, I would assume if we set those goals, we can work backwards from there and try to figure out strategies.
So, so goals for infectious disease are pretty straightforward, like, you know, we don't want to have illness if we can prevent it. Immunizations, I think, is a little tougher. Immunizations, I think, is a little tougher. We want to hit the metrics that are identified for everybody, right? But we have to first figure out what's the barrier, which is what we're working on with our Russian Ukrainian population. I don't know. I think what we struggle with with vaccines specifically is people have the right to choose and there's a lot of misinformation that circulates out in the world. And so it's really hard to wrap your arms around how to address that for this individual population or just this individual. So it's like a, it's a complex issue to address. So our goals that we're setting right now are to better understand the issue locally with a specific population because it's such a big thing, you gotta kind of take little pieces of the elephant, if that makes sense.
By the way, we've gotten hammered. Our hospital partners can share that we've gotten completely hammered around influenza this season. And we're not out of the woods yet. And the percentage of the eligible population, six months of age and older that have received influenza immunization is about 26% the last time I checked. So three out of four people eligible for influenza vaccine have not received it. So Dana's correct that it's voluntary there. There are some situations like when we have an outbreak of like measles where we can restrict folks, but in general, but there are metrics around this. And like I say, 26% ain't good, so.
No, and actually, if you really want to look at the data, our rates for immunization were much higher pre pandemic. And unfortunately, the pandemic did result in a lot of distrust and it really increased our vaccine hesitancy, but also vaccine fatigue. There's a lot of vaccine fatigue that we experience predominantly in our long term care skilled nursing facility residents. These people are vulnerable and they are, they have the lowest vaccine rates now post pandemic for influenza, you know, COVID or just pneumococcal because they're, I'm going to call it vaccine resistance now at this point.
Thank you. I didn't mean to get us stuck on vaccine rate. I was trying to think bigger picture of just generally that I think we should set goals, specific numbers of where we'd like to be as a community and put the numbers of where we are now and have a game plan of how to get to those new numbers. Whatever the public health need, I'm not an expert, so I don't know what those numbers would be or what those goals would be. But whatever those goals would be, then it would come to us as the county counselors. There are a lot of things that we could do to help address public health needs and get to those goals. But as the chair said, it's hard to get started if we don't have numbers of where we're shooting for.
Chair? If I may, this, this.
I have a chair today.
Yeah. This is a great conversation. And I think even prior to that, even prior to that, I feel like, you know, the fact they are the boots on the ground, you know, they know our community in and out from a health perspective. And what I would like to do is really have this group work together and decide what are the single greatest challenges and crisis that we're experiencing that we should focus on, you know, and that's where we start. And then we start looking at the metrics. We start looking at where we're at now and setting those goals. But and then, you know, that conversation, I think, needs to go beyond just the FAC and the Board of Health. It needs to go to community services, needs to go all the different departments and and, you know, similar to what Andrea had said earlier was, you know, we have lots of different resources available to be used, but we don't have any prioritization. We don't have any real set goals. So the the mental health sales tax dollars, the opioid abatement funds, we don't have any overarching policy. I mean, right now, we're just kind of, you know, having people apply for grants and saying, this looks great, this looks great, let's do this. But there's no policy saying, you know, these funds can be used for this, this, this and this. And we as the FAC or we as the Board of Health see that those dollars being invested in specific categories to help with this this overarching issue that we've decided to tackle. I think that a lot of that is missing. And so we need just a good, solid plan for what we plan to achieve, how we're going to do it, investigating all the different levers that we need to pull so that everybody's on the same page. And I think that can come further with discussion later today.
Yeah, I think about all those various pots of money and especially, I think, the opioid settlement money, you know, people, a lot of people died and suffered and we have this money. And I feel like it's just really so very important that we use it in the most strategic way. The money could come and go. We want to be able to say we're in a much better shape now because we use that money correctly.
I want to kind of, I'm looking, I can't see that far even with my glasses on, but Glenn, to kind of follow up with Glenn's comments, you know, I'm going to give you from a native perspective, from the tribal perspective. Where I come from, my reservation, life expectancy for men, 47 years old. I've already passed that. I feel very lucky to be alive. Unemployment rate, 95%. Average income, 12,000 a year for my reservation, South Dakota. Obviously, it's a mix. And then health outcomes, you can imagine what they are. It's a mix of things. We've siloed things. We've put money into silos and not looked at the holistic picture. And that's, that's the piece that I think from a policy funding level, when you guys look at decisions, and you can look across the river. I worked 12 years across the river for a nonprofit that served native people. Mollum County put a lot of money into housing. Has it worked? No. You know, they they had a housing first model. Get people off the street into housing, but don't give them a job, don't get them into treatment, don't deal with their mental health or substance abuse issues. And what happens? They're back out on the street again. So when you start making decisions about, you know, funding housing, funding public health, funding mental health treatment, I mean, you know, when you look at even the issue that's going on right now today with Columbia River Mental Health, how are those 800 people gonna get services? How are you going to deal with 800 people? Well, they're going to be right over there at the hospital in the ER. They're going to be out on the street. Your public safety folks are going to be dealing with them. That's the piece that I think gets missed a lot is, you know, we make decisions and we do this at the tribe too, in various silos. What we think is good for one area and we invest in it, we're not thinking how that affects everywhere else. And from a policy and a funding decision level, that's where I think the Board of Health and the county commissioners need to be. Your experts, our folks on fact and your actual subject matter experts are these guys sitting over here that know to do the boots on the work or the work on the ground there. But they're not the ones that get to decide where the funding goes, how it's used, what type of policy. That's you guys. I don't know that you want to get hung up. It's great, I always love data too. I'm a, you know, tell me vaccination rates and I will be the first one to say, yeah, we need to raise that 3%. But do I know how to do that? I've been in Indian healthcare for 25 years, but I'm not a subject matter expert. There's your subject matter expert sitting directly across from me. She knows how to to do that. But my job would be to support her and what affects that in different areas. It's not just vaccines that affects it. Right now, if I was looking at vaccines, I'd be looking at the federal level and what's going to happen. I mean, are we going to stop doing vaccines at, you know, and stop funding vaccines at the federal level? That's where I see FAC and the Board of Health really getting involved is at that level. I mean, there's some great issues at the federal level. I mean, I'd probably ask Jeff, you know, what funding is at risk right now from a tribal perspective? We've always, we've already lost funding from a tribal perspective around DEI stuff, which shouldn't even relate to the tribe because of trust responsibilities the government has from treaty rights. But that's what is at risk in the next, you know, four years or, and even if the administration changes in four years, you're still talking another four years or so to make up for what's going to happen in these next four years. So I think the holistic picture, opiate settlement dollars, we've gotten those from a tribal perspective. We're using them on a cultural activity, trying to get our folks into revisiting their culture, trying to connect with their culture, keep them out of the substance abuse issue. We're not using it for treatment because we already provide treatment. That's one issue we already do. What's the issue that we're struggling with is trying to reconnect our folks to culture. And again, it's all the holistic picture that comes in. We'll probably use some for housing to try to get folks into housing. So I think you guys are much at a higher level that can work on the policy and funding, but you have to think about it and not in silos. And I know that's hard to do when a department comes to you and says, I need funding for this. Well, what are you taking away from public health when you're funding this? What are you taking away from housing when you're funding this? How does it relate to each other? How does that holistic picture, that puzzle fit together in a broader way? I'm curious, just with the DEI stuff, you know, as the federal government puts more pressure on states, which then rolls downhill to counties, you know, is the county and the county commissioner is going to take a stand? And I know the public health folks, you see it in their slides today, still talking a lot about racial issues and equality, but you're not hearing that at the federal level right now in the same way that you did years past. That's all going away. So how is that going to affect the state when federal dollars stop coming to the state and then the state can't pass through dollars to the county, which then can't pass dollars through to our nonprofits that are the boots on the ground? That's the stand, that policy stand that, you know, I would hope that the Board of Health and FAC members are really thinking about, how does that affect? The nice thing about FAC that I've really appreciated, those 21 people, it is a very broad group of folks. Everybody comes with a different perspective. There's not another person sitting there probably thinking about how does this impact the tribal environment? But I'm not sitting there thinking like Scott is of how does this impact, you know, emergency management and the 911 system and public safety and everything else. He's got that perspective, you know, the hospital perspective. That's the, that's the exciting part for me to sit on this committee is really to hear from other folks and not be in my little silo. I mean, the Kellits Indian Tribe is a, is a big force now in Clark County, but we're not in our own little silo. We have to interact with everybody else in the county. We have to support the county. The county has to support us. We support the community. Hopefully, the community supports us. That's that holistic picture that we need to be really looking at. So, thank you.
Can I just, can I just add one perspective from the hospital? I'm not going to speak for Legacy Health, speak for just my observations as we see Columbia River Mental Health, their financial struggles. So if something can't be close that gap, there'll be more patients coming to the hospital. The vaccines, more patients coming to the hospital that technically should not be, right? If they got vaccinated, they wouldn't have to come to the hospital. So it's more and more and more being put on the hospitals. We're not growing in size. We don't have the capacity. It seems like the reliance on the hospital to take care of every problem, we can't continue because our funding is getting cut. I mean, there's very significant concerns around the direct payment program being cut. We already, hospitals haven't got a raise for Medicaid since 2012. So we don't have an endless bucket of money. So the concern is, at one point, the stra, the camel's back is going to break and you're going to see hospitals closing and then wherever all these problems go. So I, it's just, and I don't know if you all noticed what happened across the river with Providence. They gave the nurses significant raises. They're currently being paid about 20% above what we pay our nurses and they're just across the river. So it's somewhere there, the something's going to break. It's just not sustainable in the current model.
Yeah, it's a complex system and you have to, each component needs to be healthy for the whole thing to work. We're dealing with that in law and justice too.
Yeah, I would agree with Tracy. Capacity is a huge issue. Our emergency room at Salmon Creek is always hopping. But I would also say that our capacity issues are very complex. It's not just we don't have enough room. It's also kind of like some of the, the comments on upstream, downstream. We also have a flow of patients coming in and going out. So as we transfer our patients out into the community, if there's not enough long term care facility beds, they stay with us for months on end. If there's not enough mental health facilities to address the patients in the emergency room, because we don't have at Legacy, a mental health floor or unit, the patients just stay with us for weeks, months. And so that flow is also backed up within our own hospital systems. So it's very complex work. And I'm hoping that with this work, we can move the needle.
This is all really cheery, so. Actually, I think this is a great discussion and I'm thinking why we haven't gotten FAC and Board of Health together until this time, but it's really great. It's a really good discussion. I agree that we need a, a non siloed approach to this because these things are all interconnected. I'm looking for more, more forward to the discussion about how we get there because I'm still processing all of this. One of the things I'm thinking about is more Board of Health FAC interactions moving down the road because I think you're hearing the, our counselors, our Board of Health members are hearing perspectives that you might not have heard before as well, so. I don't know whether we want to go to those case discussions or whether we want to, after the break, just move to what we're going to do at noon anyway, to the, the case discussions. I just, so maybe I'll bring this up now. Figure out how do we get discussions going in terms of the, the policy discussions? And I don't know whether this addresses what Michael was talking about in terms of getting past the silos. Probably not, but I've, I've done work around decision making in public health, given our role, our statutory authority, given our role around resource allocation, giving our roles around things like conflict of interest. And there were some case examples I provided in the packet, we don't have to get into them about how decisions are made. But I thought this framework we use in, in our decision making around ethics, in terms of making ethical decisions, would be helpful, just even the questions here. So like question number three, when we're. would be helpful, just even the questions here. So like question number three, when we're, when we're making decisions about things. Who are, when I've made really bad decisions and I've made a number of them in the past and I can give examples. I didn't consider who all, who all, who all the stakeholders are in a particular issue. And I can give an example about that. I think we talked about a community input and making sure we don't miss any input on that. Whether we're really clear what our, what our, what our goals are when we're making decisions and what if you have different choices about decisions, what are the risks and harms of concern in one choice versus the other? And then of course, there's, you know, there's issues about legal authority, historical context. I don't know whether this provides any guidance or not, but it's stuff I threw in there for things to think about when we are making, or when you are making decisions. I don't know if anybody has any questions about those. It's just a framework that I thought might be helpful. So the next question, the next set of questions, and when you identify maybe a policy decision or things to ask ourselves, is there a benefit, is there a balance of benefits over harms? So for example, you know, we can talk about what we did during COVID-19, for example, and decisions we made around, around interventions there. Was there, was there a balance of benefits over homes? Were the burdens distributed fairly to legitimate representatives of affected groups? And this is where, you know, equity comes in as well as have the opportunity to participate in decision-making. Do we respect, you know, it's always an issue around, the issues we get into public health are individual rights versus the greater good or the healthy community versus individual rights. It comes up with the immunization discussion all the time. But do we, do, do our decisions respect, to the extent they can, individual choices and interests? Do we respect professional and civic roles? We use transparency, honesty, things like that. Some more questions to ask when we're making, if we've come up to a, a series of potential interventions or decisions, how we weigh them against each other? Then the last part is at the end of the day, can we justify, I think that's the next slide, Mallory or Michelle. Is our goal that we established likely to be accomplished? Will the benefits of what we do outweigh the infringed moral considerations? Again, the public good versus individual rights. Is it necessary to achieve the goal? And something we use in public health, believe it or not, is in terms of things that we do, for example, around isolation, quarantine. Are we using the least restrictive and least intrusive measure? We want to do that if we can achieve the same goal with something that's less restrictive, that's where we ought to be going. And at the end of the day, can we, we can't do our work without trust. And can we justify our action and policy and that folks that are most affected can find acceptable? At the end of the day, we can't do our work without building trust. So that, that's just a framework I wanted to share. And I could give you examples of how we've used that in decision-making, but something to think about. Probably got us off the topic though, so I apologize for that. I think, yeah, we actually did that first case a few years ago here in Clark County. We, we, we did it as a practice, we did it as a practice case. But we actually, the idea was when vaping first speaking, this is more than 10 years ago when vaping became the thing. There was an issue about whether, whether we should recommend to the Board of Health that they develop an ordinance to ban vaping in indoor public health places. And we actually, when we're thinking about stakeholders, we not only brought in restaurant owners, but we also brought in vaping folks. So we brought in the vaping community and we had that deliberation about whether they should do this or not. And it turned out that the vaping community were perfectly fine with not having vaping in public spaces. They didn't want people to get upset about being in a restaurant and smelling popcorn at a neighboring table. So if I remember correctly. We also had, it's not on the slides here, we also had a deliberation about back more than 10 years ago, when we had meetings of our, of our immunization coalition, included the immunization nurses from our clinical partners across the county. We used to have, and we, we would have meetings and they would be, food would be provided by the pharmaceutical companies. So we had developed a policy that basically said we would not accept pharmaceutical representation, you know, sponsorship of our immunization coalition meetings. It was kind of prescient because, you know, you've heard all the misinformation about vaccines that were in bed with the pharmaceutical companies and all that around vaccines. So we brought that issue to the, this is long before the craziness around vaccine misinformation, but we brought that to our foreign ethics deliberation. And we invited the immunization coalition members as well as the pharmaceutical representatives participate. It turned out that the pharmaceutical representatives had, they had their own codes of ethics. And they agreed that it didn't, it didn't look good to have them sponsoring lunches for the immunization coalition. But they didn't want to be singled out, so they were fine with the ban on sponsored breakfasts and lunches as long as it included medical equipment companies. So we developed a policy that basically said we will not have these meetings sponsored by either pharmaceutical companies or medical equipment companies. And everybody was happy. So anyway, I'm just bringing these up as examples of things to think about when, around decision-making. This is one that we haven't done here, but it would be an issue as, you know, we're talking about housing and social determinants. But what if we were faced with a situation where, where we had lead, lead paint in housing and lead, lead hazards in housing? And we're thinking about requiring the land, the landlords to abate the lead hazard. This would be low-income housing, but the landlords didn't have the money to do it. And they were basically going to walk away from their buildings if we put this requirement in. And the concern there is then people, they wouldn't have lead exposure, but they wouldn't be housed either. So what should the approach be in a situation like this? I like putting tough, tough questions together. So what would you do as a, if you as a Board of Health were presented with an ordinance that would ban, would require them to eliminate lead hazards, but then they'd walk away from their buildings? So that was what I put for some examples for deliberation, but I don't know that we have enough time to do that. We have to get to the rest of the agenda items. But anyway, we use that framework that I showed you for making decisions like this. It can be helpful. You don't have any tough decisions to make, yeah. I'm glad you're you and I'm me on stuff like this. Shall we go ahead and take a break and then we can get to the, to the next session, which is the public health structure in Washington State, roles of Board of Health and FAC, great. Can we move to the presentation? I think we're going to go to the roles and responsibilities. Oh, here we go. So I'm going to give a little bit of, talk about a little bit of history here, if that's okay. See how we got here. So if you could, so we're talking about the Board of Health and FAC structure and roles, so. So just so you're familiar, I'm, I'm a big fan of knowing the RCWs. Closer to the mic, okay. This is interesting. I'm a big fan of the RCWs and knowing them. I commit them to memory. So, so a lot of the powers of the Board of Health are enforced through my position. So, um, so a lot of the powers of the Board of Health are enforced through my position. Um, and we'll get into that in a minute here. Um, but following the roles, the, the statutes of the state, um, and of course, uh, public health is a state function. Believe it or not, the federal government doesn't have any role in the public, in public health that way. Uh, health is not in the constitution. The way the feds get involved in public health is two ways. One is through funding and when you provide grants, there are grant requirements, so we're beholden to grants. And the other way the federal government gets involved in, uh, in public health is the role, their role over interstate commerce. And I'd be happy to share an experience that we actually had around that role, uh, in, uh, from the federal role here in Clark County. The, uh, the, I highlighted some areas there. Uh, you have the authority as a Board of Health to enact local rules and regulations, um, to preserve, promote and protect public health. You'll be doing that at our next, um, Board of Health meeting. I think a septic ordinance is coming up to update, Mark's an expert on this, to update the, uh, the code here, uh, to, to match the state septic code, which has been updated. Yeah.
Yeah, our local code can't be less strict than the state, but it can be stricter. Uh, and recently we've just, this, the septic tag committee made up of different septic people have revised our code. We've got some minor revisions, um, on it and we're pretty much in line with the state, but it still formally has to be approved by the Board of Health.
So that'll be coming up.
But I think the big thing is the cooperation that we have between the, the Health Department and the private sector to bring a product to us, to you guys, that we're basically all in agreement.
And Mark's a good example of how we have, you know, the FAC membership includes members of a regulated industry as well. So it's a great partnership. Okay. Um, it's pretty broad, provide for the control and prevention of dangerous contagious infectious disease, abatement of nuisances, and they're the big role. But the, the two main roles that in terms of decisions that you're, that you're making is basically around ordinances, rules, regulations that carry the force of law as well as establish, I better talk to the microphone, establishing fees. Okay, next. Okay, so we have, um, a few years ago, a few sessions ago, House Bill 1152, um, uh, was passed that changed the structure of, of a potential structure of local boards of health. Now, Washington is a home rule state. I'll go back into a little history here. Um, Washington is a home rule state, so the public health authority is basically delegated or exercised at the local level. Historically in Washington State, before this bill was passed, um, the public health structure was at the, um, decision of the county elected officials. So the default structure across the state was to have, was to have a local Board of Health that was made up of the county elected officials, commissioners or our case counselors. Um, but local elected officials can also choose to have other structures. So formerly, uh, in Clark County, before 2003, uh, the elected officials of Clickitat, Skamania and Clark elected to establish a health district. So we were known as the Southwest Washington Health District until 2003. And, uh, that's when the, when the electors decided to dissolve the district and reestablish a local Board of Health. And I'm going to get back into that in a minute. So, um, but the default model, uh, was a county, uh, Board of Health. Um, but counties could form districts. So we still have a number of districts in the state. Um, we've got, uh, for example, Benton Franklin is a health, a multi-county health district. Shalan Douglas is a multi-county health district. Northeast Tri is a county health district, a multi-county health district. We also have a couple of city county health departments, um, which they could form. Uh, Sea King is an example, Tacoma Pierce is an example. And then, uh, but we here in Clark County are the more traditional, um, um, Board of Health. The House Bill 1152 was passed with the idea of, um, getting politics out of public health. That was dropped by the governor and, uh, some legislators. And we could debate about whether this new structure, uh, got the politics out of public health. Um, I'd be happy to talk about that. Um, but the new structure basically said, a county, uh, a county, uh, a Board of Health must have, in addition to the county elected officials, that county elected officials needed to appoint an equal number of non-elected members to their Board of Health. And one of those members could, uh, they needed to have a tribal member on their Board of Health. And that could either, either be in the equal number of non-electeds, or if you had, if they weren't, then you could have an additional non-elected member that would be a tribal member. So that statute was passed several sessions ago, and there was an exception to that choice. The exception was that a county Board of Health did not have to have that structure if they had what was called a, uh, uh, Community Health Advisory Board in place, I think it was before January of 2021. Clark County met that exception because we had the Public Health Advisory Council. The Public Health Advisory Council was established in 2003. So when, when the county, uh, elected to pull out of the Southwest Washington Health District and formed the County Board of Health, they decided to create FAC, um, because they did not want to lose the representation they had from other entities like, in the old Southwest Washington Health District, I believe there were, uh, members, not only the other county electives, but cities within the county, as well as even non-elected folks on, on the, on the Southwest Washington Health District Board. So they created FAC, um, in 2003. And FAC met the definitions of a Community Health Advisory Board when the statute passed a few years ago. And I know they did because they actually used the FAC bylaws in creating that, in, in, in that statute that got passed. And, uh, FAC, unlike, uh, non, uh, unlike the other model where you might have a few non-electeds, FAC has 21 representatives. And if you look at the list of where the FAC members come from, you can see the relationship to the old district. For example, FAC has a representative of the city of Vancouver, and it also has a representative from cities other than the city of Vancouver, mirroring what was in the district when they had city, uh, representatives from cities throughout, you know, throughout the tri-county area. And so we can go through the list of other FAC members, but the idea was to maintain as much public stakeholder representation as they could, um, through FAC and then have FAC, um, advise the Board of Health. I don't know if anybody has any questions about that history. You may have already be aware of it, so.
I'm kind of curious about what the deliberations were at the time with the council and Board of Health at that time. Uh, did they discuss which way should we go or we just don't want to change? I, do you recall what the deliberations?
When this statute was passed, yeah. Um, I don't know if there were extensive deliberations about it, um, but they elected to stay where they are.
Question, so have a lot of other counties taken the other option of having a equal number of non-elected and tribal members on their Board of Health?
Yeah, so, uh, a good example is Calhoun's, uh, Calhoun's, uh, Calhoun's went the non-elected route. So they have a Board of Health that includes, uh, non-electeds and there is, I think the tribal position is vacant. Michael can talk about that if you have questions, but. That, that's been an issue around the state also because I think the, the statute required the American Indian Health Commission to appoint the tribal members to different boards of health around the state. And I think there were some delays in that if I, and a lot of those positions were not filled.
Yeah, several of the, uh, positions from other tribes across Washington aren't filled yet. I mean, it took us, it's a lengthy process for a tribe because to be, you know, the voice of the tribe, it has to go through our tribal councils to get approved. Then it goes to the American Indian Health Commission and then they go back to the county that's requesting it. And I think when we appointed somebody for Calhoun's County, it was a good nine months to a year, I think, process by the time the tribe actually appointed, by the time the person first, the person took the first meeting. So it's a lengthy process.
And I don't have the number of counties that elected to continue with our model versus go to the other model. But there's still a number of districts in the state, so, um, they're going to have other non-electeds on based on their, their district.
If I remember, oh, excuse me.
Go ahead, did you, go ahead.
If I remember right too, by having a FAC, there was kind of a movement there for a while to have regionals, health departments, rather than more local health departments. And if I, I might be wrong, but if I remember right, by having a FAC that prevented that and through my experience in public health, that was the last thing that we wanted. We wanted to keep it local.
I think you're a charter member of, you are one of the original, you're the last, are you the last charter member?
I think Paul and myself.
Our, uh, Restaurant Association Representative and.
Also, I think the discussion even going way back when we were a health district to Clark County decided to pull, uh, out of the, away from the other two counties, a lot of it was this expense. Clark County was kind of subsidizing the other two counties was a big part of it. And they felt they didn't have enough representation because they were putting all this money into it, but they didn't have enough representation on it.
Over the years, was there more interaction between the FAC and the Board of Health? But, yeah, I, I don't know. Was there, was there a lot of communication? Because I've just been in this role a little over two years and it's, we get reports, uh, from time to time from the FAC, but there, there really wasn't, uh, like this kind of deliberation and consideration. So I just wonder how that was.
There was quite a bit of, uh, communication. The FAC was responding to crisis and I can remember writing, FAC was writing letters to the board or even during that 2007 budget thing, uh, FAC met individually with, uh, county commissioners then. Uh, you know, we started at the beginning with really nothing and we developed a mission statement, uh, goals, uh, when there tend to be health crisis, uh, that's when we were involved.
There, there was a lot more involvement in FAC. Was it, it might be up to 10 years ago, Javi, correct me if I'm on. So there's been a lot of changes in the Board of Health. I'll give you one example of where FAC was really involved. So way, and I don't know the year, but, um, uh, working with, uh, with the Department of Community Planning, uh, FAC wrote the, uh, FAC really championed the health element, which was a chapter of the county, actually, the, the health element had eight chapters, I think eight chapters itself, um, in the county comprehensive plan. And, uh, I think there's a link, is there a link still on our website to that? But I mean, the, the chapters included things like housing, you know, talking about social determinants of how, how, housing, transportation. There was a chapter, we're talking 10 years ago on climate change, and that FAC championed, uh, and shared with the Board of Health. Housing, food access, climate change, healthcare access, it was a number of, uh, I think eight chapters in the, in the health element.
That'd be good to take a look at, and I hope you're actively involved with this round of comp plan update.
We have a great working relationship with the Department of Community Planning and some, some of the folks on Andrea's team are, are, are working, were actually contributing to a climate. Uh, do you want to, do you want to share that, Andrea or?
Sure, I can provide a high-level update. So we have a, an FPHS funded position that is currently filled by Amy Kosky, who is working with Jenna K. on various aspects of, um, the climate element and greenhouse gas emission updates to the comp planning process. So, um, Amy Kosky has been doing that work while we've been building out our other, um, climate-related FPHS work from a different funding category. Lauren Henrickson has also been a part of that work and really providing technical support for building community relationships and collecting community feedback to inform what those priority policies will be from the community perspective, um, in addition to, um, contracts with some of the, um, the planning, the primary planning contracts, uh, capo strategies, the data collection, um, the development of the climate and health dashboard, working with GIS on some of the comprehensive planning specific work products and then separating and differentiating climate and health dashboard data generally. So it's been an incredible working partnership and incredibly collaborative. I think what's different with this comprehensive planning process are the two overlays for the GMA that were added, which are incredibly important and prioritize, I think stewardship as it relates to climate and health and equity. And then also engaging the community around what's most important in terms of climate justice related to the eventual plans that will come before council for adoption. And that I would add about the last comprehensive planning process and the chapters that were added and also this planning process and whatever gets approved, is there has to be a mechanism for accountability and funding the work. A policy on print and on a piece of paper is great and the recommendation can be the right recommendation, but who's going to do the work? How is it funded? And how are you going to measure progress over what timeframe? And that's where we get stuck a lot because the comp planning update is expansive. And just looking at the draft policies that the EJAC put together, a lot of those recommendations don't have a primary government or public-private partnership entity that will be stewarding and carrying that policy forward. So that's where policy and action really needs to come into play. Out of everything that gets approved, who's doing what and who's going to track it over time?
By the way, in terms of our relationship with, uh, community planning, we also have an aging commission representative on our Public Health Advisory Council. He's just not here today.
Well, I wanted to make sure we're done with that topic because I want to talk about structure. Yeah, okay. Okay, so yeah, I, on structure, I, I'm really interested in trying to protect from having politics take too much role in, in, uh, health decisions. Um, I think the way it's set up now, you're just, it's, you're just risking, you're, you're just lucky if you have a county council that aligns with the public health, um, direction that the experts may, uh, recommend. And I just, I think this might be an opportunity for us to improve what we have right now. And I, I had a couple of questions with that. Can, can we change the, under that bill 1152 or 1155, can we change the Can, can we change the, under that bill 1152 or 1155, can we change the structure at any time to go back to the model as they suggested? And if we do that, can you have the, a structure where you have the county council plus an equal number of non-elected and tribal reps in addition to having advisory council? Can you have those two things at the same time? And then at the very beginning, you alluded to some challenges of whether that, the new system that was proposed in that bill actually takes politics out of the decision. So I, that's a lot of questions there, but I'd like to kind of go through them.
There's a couple more slides on this and I think it's going to get at that. So, so here's our, I just want to go through the, the, the statute that resulted from the bill is 70.46.140. So, so this is the role of the community health advisory board. So obviously provides input to the local board of health in terms of recruitment of my positions here. It does require use of a health equity framework, evaluate the impact of proposed policies and programs, promote public, I highlighted the ones that I thought were essential, but they all are. I mean, community forums and hearings, task forces. I would point out that the FAC would make review and make recommendations of local health jurisdiction, local board of health for an annual budget and fees. So they don't approve the budget or fees, but they make recommendations. I would point out that even with the new structure, if I understand correctly, with the new, with the other structure where there are non-elected members of the Board of Health, they can't vote on the budget either. That still would be the council, would not be the, it would not be the non-elected members on the Board of Health. I think they could vote on fees, but not on the budget. So fees are, yeah. So even if you went to the other model, they would not have, the, the non-elected would not be involved in approving the budget. Certainly other policies and fees. Okay, next, go to the next slide and then I'll answer the other. Oh, can you have both at the same time? I think that, again, I'd have to ask our attorney. I don't think so because if you go back to the previous slide, their role here is set in statutes. So if you look, if you had the, if you had the others, if you had both structures at the same time, I don't know that would work, but I could get an answer, I can try to get an answer from prosecuting attorney, but I don't know that you can do both at the same time. I'd be surprised.
Could I just add, so with the new potential structure, you have, you have to have an equal number of non-elected and tribal, meaning there would just be five additional members or can you have 21?
You have to have at least an equal number.
At least.
At least an equal number. I, so, so the other thing about, well, the other thing about the other structure is that generally, so here in FAC, we have designated members. So like the, for example, the hospitals each appoint a member. Now, as the, as the council, you could reject that. I think that would be difficult to do if, if legacy said, we want Breen to be the, to be the representative and you said, no, we, give us somebody else. I assume that could be possible. But generally there, the, and we can go into the next slide to talk about the members. Well, that's the statute. I'll go to our members in a minute. Let's not go there yet. I'll go through this in a minute. The, so we have, we have like designated members. For example, we have a member that the law enforcement council, law enforcement representatives at the law enforcement council. Thanks. Scott, you're a representative, you're a specific designated representative from Cressa.
Yes, Cress is called out in our public health charter as a designated position.
We have a dentist representative. We have a required physician representative. Actually, our physician representative is the medical director of Columbia River Mental Health Services. Probably reason why he's not here today. We have a designated nursing nurse representative, a nurse practicing county. So we have all these designated positions and some of them are appointed by their, I think a mark here is appointed by the septic designers and installers, your group, our technical advisory group appoints you. So our, our, our restaurant representative is, or our food representative is appointed by the restaurant association. So that's how it works. The, you have to look at their, my, my point about the other model is, the other model is, now you all have to approve these representatives, but the other model, the, the boards, the council, the, the board of health or the, the elected representatives at the other model directly appoint the non-elected. And they generally reflect the, if I have to give my bias here, they reflect the ideologies or the beliefs of the current electeds that are in office. So that can change. I'm just, our situation is a bit more, I don't know if I'd say use the word resistant to that, but our, our situation here, given the way people are appointed, even though they're approved, is a bit more, I don't know if the word resistant to that is, but different.
Right. I think the overall concern is keeping politics out of the decision-making. And so what you're saying, it's more resistant to politics entering it.
Exactly.
If this, this, the FAC is, is, well, it ultimately comes back to the, to the board to be selected, but generally it's just approved.
Yeah, my, my experience and my belief is that having the model that we have now is less likely to have politics enter it because we have broader community representation on the group. But that's my bias.
That makes a lot of sense. I mean, if we could, if we were a different council and we just appointed whoever we wanted, our best friends to agree with us, that would be the board of health under the other model. We could potentially do that and we wouldn't necessarily be required to have experts on that board with us. So I guess maybe, this is just speaking for me, I think the best thing we could do is try to increase the interaction with the current existing advisory council. And, and I don't know if there's any way to solidify recommendations from the advisory committee that we have to consider it, but any kind of practices that we could do to increase interaction and, and, and get the advice from experts would be encouraged. So any ideas there?
If I could add to this real quick, you know, from my experience, I think I have found really three issues with the, not necessarily the structure, but involving the process too. Because some of this could be, we could change process to make things work potentially. But to me, there's three things. There's one which we've talked about, which is the politics. The second is that as board of health being the county council, I mean, I can't speak for the other four, but I know I didn't run to become the board of health. I ran my campaign to become Clark County councillor and it came with the job of being on board of health. And so just inherently in that process, there can be a lack of interest in health, right? In, in the board of health. So that's the second one. And then to me, the third one is the fact that we are elected, we are not professional and we have a massive lack of knowledge in this field. So to me, those are the three things really that I would like to figure out, whether it be changing our structure, changing our process, or maybe a little bit of both, how we can solve those. And I think that for me, this meeting, and I will add this, you know, I think the best way to take politics out of it is with knowledge. It really is. You know, when you sit down with professionals and have a transparent, great conversation using real data, it, it becomes very hard to be political at that point. So I think connection between the professionals in this group and the board of health will, I don't know that it'll solve it completely, but I think it will massively help reduce that, the potential for politics coming into play.
Yeah, great points. I don't want to name names because I want to be really careful here, but I can give you examples of that other model that it got more political, including a nearby example. So I won't say any more than that.
Dr. Melnick?
Yeah.
Just before we go away from the idea of using this other structure, is there any way that we could create a board of health that includes this, the non-elected and tribal and experts, but in county code or rules and procedures, we establish firm requirements, kind of like the statute requires a certain number of representatives from certain areas so that we wouldn't just be appointing our buddies, that there'd actually be experts that fills those gaps that Counselor Young is talking about?
I would, I, so I think, I think it would have to be consistent with the statute, which is up there. So you can, let's go to this slide right now. So you could see that you could appoint members with expertise and experience in healthcare access, physical environment. These are the requirements there. Consumers, lived experience, stakeholders. Actually, this is the advisory council, so it's not the board. Let's go to the, I think the next one, does it have the board on it? Go to the next slide. No, it may not. Keep going. Okay, there, here's a model without FAC. Okay. So if you don't have a community health advisor board or FAC, you have to select them from the following areas. And you can see there's a lot of choices there. So.
It looks like a lot of restrictions there that are good.
I would basically say that it's not difficult if you follow stuff that's happening elsewhere that you can certainly appoint a physician or an osteopathic physician that has, depending on your ideology, that fits your ideology as well. And I could give you examples of that. I mean, you've probably seen that. That includes other, other positions there as well. So there's a list there. And you, remember you, so these are the consumers and if you go back up to the previous slide, so you have to have a, you have to have an equal number of non-elected. It doesn't say you have, you can, by the way, you, if you read A there, the remaining board members must be persons who are elected, who are not elected officials. It must be selected from the following categories. So you could have a board of, if there, let's say there's five, five of you electeds. You could have five non-elected that are chosen from any of these categories. And for example, one of the non-elected in Skamania County is a chiropractor. Well, that's not on the list, but you can choose people from a variety of positions. You don't have to necessarily choose a physician, for example, or a nurse. And then on the next slide, you have other community stakeholders. Again, you have to have an equal number of non-elected, but there's a lot of wiggle room in terms of what you, what you would be putting on your, on non-elected on your board in the other model.
Dr. Melnick, with this model, you mentioned earlier that they cannot vote on a budget, for example. Is that true with policy?
No, they could, they could vote on public health policy. So, but it has to be the, yes, policy related to the board of health, not other, not policy related to everything else.
Right, yeah. Now, when, when they vote on a policy, does it have to go through council for the policy to be applied?
I think that, I believe, and again, I could double check with the prosecuting attorney, but I believe that if you were going to pass a, let's say a septic, an ordinance related to the septic code, the non-elected board of health members, as a board of health members would, would be voting on that. Jeff's nodding his head, but I'm pretty sure of that.
Yeah, our, our fee process, the board of health actually approves the fees.
It's an ordinance, yeah.
And then the county council approves the budget, which takes into consideration the revenue generated from those fees.
We missed a couple of slides. Keep going. Okay, so this, this, this is a requirement. And then you can see what we've, we've got here. I just want to go through this really quickly. Next slide, please.
Who appoints them?
So they're, so these are our current public health advisory council. They're recommended by their, by, if they're representing, for example, the hospital, they're represented by, recommended by the hospitals. We've got a couple of, we've got a few physicians that are, that we sent out press releases for from the general community. For example, the physician position is, any physician can apply to become a FAC member and we do a press release on that. Same thing with the nurse, there's a nurse practicing in Clark County, there's a physician practicing in Clark County. We have a veterinarian physician that's practicing in Clark County. When we go through the list next, if you go to the next slide, so you can see that, so there's the doc, the nurse, a veterinarian on the left there, they'd be, anybody could apply if they meet the definition of a nurse or dentist or doctor or veterinarian presenting and practicing in the county. The restaurant association, they recommend a representative. The septic designers and contractors, et cetera, recommend somebody. The water utility is a recommended position. The hospitals recommend the two positions. The city of Vancouver recommends a position. The other cities recommend a different, another position. The consumers can apply on their own. The representative from a social human services agency can apply on their own. Same thing with the educational community. The law enforcement is recommended by the law enforcement council. And then we've got a representative from the youth. Anybody could apply who's a youth. Generally, I think you were recommended by the youth commission, weren't you? Or I, I can't remem, you applied on your own. Okay, you can do that. Commission on, the aging representative can apply on their own. And then the chair and I'm an ex-official member along with the chair.
And who makes the final decision?
You guys, the board, the board, the council, the, well, the board of health.
That sounds like the other model as well, where we're the ultimate decider of who's on these committees.
Yeah, I think it'd be a, you certainly are, but I think it would be interesting to see the, the council reject, for example, the representative of the law enforcement council or the hospitals. You could.
Just wondering if we could add that kind of application process to the other model and make that body that's making final decisions more robust with experts on it. That's kind of our goal here. I just trying to work on the nuts and bolts and maybe, maybe we don't figure it all out here, but maybe staff could come to us on the council for alternatives, just so that we can have a public discussion about if there's a better alternative for us. us. I don't know if that's a good thing that could have come out of today's.
One, one thing I would suggest is that there is a statewide, what's the name of that Washington local public health organization?
A Washington State Association of Local Public Health Officials.
Which is, and what is it called?
Wasalfo.
Wasalfo. Okay, Wasalfo. We could ask them to come and ask some of these questions as well, because Counselor Young and I had attended, oh, what a three-day training that really brought this, some of these issues to light for us. And I know they're working with other, they're working with other counties that are changing their model. And so it might be worthwhile to have them come and ask some of our questions as well, what options might be available. Just a suggestion.
Thank you. I, I think we're all in agreement here that we want to minimize the politicization of healthcare in our county. And so we're trying to figure out how we can do that. We understand that we, in absolute terms, we probably couldn't, right? Because we're all influenced ideologically one way or the other. And I have confidence in the current council. My concern is future councils, right? And so, you know, in future issues with healthcare in our community. And so that's what we're trying to do. We just, we, we want to limit the influence of politics in our decision-making. And it's a tough, very difficult task, but it sounds to me like the current council, for the most part, is committed to doing so. So we're trying to figure out what that looks like.
I, you know, I can see value in, in what we're, you know, potentially bringing on a lot more knowledge into the Board of Health and kind of combining that. Kind of a short step and easy, you know, short gap fix for this, I could see would be to assign all five counselors to the FAC as non-voting members. Honestly, I think that would help a lot. It would help us to be a part of the conversation, but not to be able to dominate the advisory council. But we would be there to be in the discussion, be involved, be able to hear what's happening, and we would be much more knowledgeable in our decisions. Not saying that's the right path, but it's just something that could change that I think would make it better. But I would like to hear from the advisory council, too. All we're, all we're hearing is from the council at this point. I'd love to hear what your thoughts are.
Let, let me just say, I think you, we very much value the FAC and the, the work that you do and all the positions that you're representing. So this is not to in any way negate that.
I think what, the difference between that, before the FAC was formed and now, is the frequency that you guys have the Board of Health meetings. And the educational component to that, I'm still not sure that a lot of the counties have Board of Health meetings all that often. I know in the past, they weren't. And usually, well, even when it was Southwest Washington Health District, it was really involved about budget only. That was always the topic. It wasn't so much anything about public health, except the budget. Yeah, I, I think this Clark County became a very active Board of Health. And I know that was kind of picked up by other health departments and everything. Just maybe it's kind of some history.
Chair, I would like to add something. Yeah. So as a unelected official, not official, as part of P-hac, I have no formal training in how government is structured. I'm all, I'm very new to this. And I think that gaining some education so that we can collaborate, like you, I know that as newly elected officials, you go through rigorous training. Or rigorous, maybe rigorous is the wrong word. You go through some training. And so perhaps we can collaborate with whether it be a certain amount of us go to that training, or we all go together, or that's an idea. But also, you know, as community members, we want to represent the, the specific entity in which we have been brought here for. So as the legacy health member, I have some expertise in not only the position that I hold within the hospital, but also have access to the leaders within my organization. And so collaborating in that way, we would like to know what it, what is it that you want from me and also from my leaders and bring value to you in that way?
Well, I've been on FAC now almost two years, I guess. And I will say, it's been very valuable, Sue, to have you there. And in the times that you've been there, Glenn, to represent the council, it's been very valuable, I think, in those meetings. I think that there's a disconnect. In my day job, I report to 22 tribal council members. We have about 36 different committees and boards in the tribe. Lots of non-communication goes on, lots of struggles. We're currently doing a project to try to figure out how do we make our boards and committees more functional and efficient. I, I don't know that adding, you know, one of the thoughts was adding more council members to our committees. I don't know that that's an option that the tribe will probably end up going with. More interactions like this, though, either quarterly basis, where you have kind of frank discussions. I think you still need the representatives from the different factions within the community here. But it is very helpful to have a council rep be part of it, because you obviously come with a different direction and different mindset than, just like we all do from our own area. So, and the reality of probably all five of you showing up at a meeting with your busy schedules probably isn't going to happen, because you serve on a bunch of other things. I mean, the reality of our 22 council members showing up to a lot of our different events when they serve on a bunch of other things outside of the tribe, too, probably just isn't going to happen in reality. So I don't know if that's a good idea, but I do support more communication, I think, in some fashion. And maybe that's quarterly, you know, meetings. Maybe it doesn't have to be six hours or something, but it's a, you know, maybe one of the, every quarter of the FAC meeting includes the Board of Health members in it, or something at a quarterly basis, or at least semi-annual, so. One quick question that I have, Dr. Melnick, is I know that there is different software that can be used to record and summarize meetings now that it is very helpful using AI. And, you know, if, if, if we could get reports more regularly of what the actual discussions are that happen at the FAC meeting, that would be also helpful, just for us to keep in touch. Because, you know, I've been, I think I've attended one or two of the FAC meetings. And up until then, I really had no idea what you guys discussed. So, you know, a more regular, not a 20-page report, but something that condenses things down, but still gives us enough meat to understand the basics of the conversation that took place would be very helpful.
So we record the, Mallory? We, I'm sorry, we record the FAC meetings, right? But we can also, where, where do we have the recordings stored? So you can listen to them now, correct?
One thing I found participating in FAC is that, and that we would meet the night before the Board of Health meeting, and that often it was the same material that we went over. So, so I think the quarterly meetings where it's more informal, give and take, discussion could be, could be better than, than all five of us trying to show up. Although maybe if two of us showed up, that, that could be helpful, too. But if it's the same, if it's the same subject matter, it might be, we, we should probably look at that.
I agree. That, that sounds kind of inefficient, in a way. Have two separate meetings with the same, I think the, the challenge is, is, and this would be true if they were, if we were with the other model, the FAC members are volunteers and they all have day jobs as well. So attending Board of Health meetings during, I assume, would be difficult for many of you. Is that correct? During the day? So, I mean, in our discussion today, we need to think about ways to get you all together that recognizes that.
We, we have evening meetings, too, so. I don't know. I, I think everyone's schedule's with, with us considered a part-time job for us. And people have full-time jobs in addition to this. So I'd say scheduling will always be a challenge.
That would be one, one thing I actually thought of. I mean, you have council meetings once a month at 6:00 PM, correct? That may be one thing we want to consider, having a Board of Health meeting at 6:00 PM.
Some of those meetings go really long.
I.
Especially with the public comment we're likely to get at Board of Health meetings. I can see the meeting going till 2:00 or 3:00 AM.
We, we generate plenty of public comment ourselves.
Thank you. I really appreciate the council's desire to have, what I hear is it being sustainable and broad and a really wide variety of representation. I've only been on FAC for, I think, less than a year or so. And I think how many times social services may not, the impact of certain things be brought forward. So however, however the structure goes moving forward, I just want to reiterate, as Michael said, not this, this siloed approach, but just really making sure we've got the full representation of voices there. Thank you.
And another idea might just be, instead of a quarterly discussion amongst all of us that's not structured, to have a representative from the FAC come to a council meeting quarterly with the latest recommendation from the group of experts. I mean, as we've tried, tried to make really clear here, we don't consider ourselves experts. I might have a biology degree, but that doesn't make me an expert. And we need to hear from you on what we should move forward on. We're open to any and all ideas of whatever addresses public health. And it would be great if, when you all meet, you come up with recommendations each meeting on what's the top priority for the community in the next few months, and maybe report that to us so we can have a discussion in a public meeting at council to talk about those things. That would be wonderful. And I understand you might have had a different culture dynamics with the council before, but as I said, we're really open to hearing what you would like us to work on. And would love to hear that as many, as often as possible.
So I think we're going to take a lunch break. That's okay.
So lunch is ready, and it's in room 678. It's the first conference room. So enjoy.
Dr. Melnick is chewing and swatting. Venus, in just a moment.
I'm here. I'm here. So is this the slide we left off on? Oh, wait, go back a couple. Keep going, make sure. Okay, we went through that. Keep going back one more. Okay, go to the next. Okay, we did that. Go down. This one we talked about, okay. It's just part of the bylaws. And we talked about the members. Okay, keep going. Maybe almost done here. And this is, we just talked about this without FAC. We talked about that for a few minutes. Next slide. Is that it? Is it the last slide? Keep going. Okay. Oh, okay. Go up one. I'm sorry. Going back and forth. It's hard without controlling it here. So those are the members that we could, okay, we talked about that. Okay, now go down to the next one. Okay, and the board members must be approved by majority vote of the board. This would be the counselors here, not the commissioners. And then if it's, an equal number of members selected from each of the three categories. If you want to go back up to the three category, so you would have, if, wait, 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 before you do that. So we have five. If there are one more, two members over the nearest multiple of three, those members may be selected from any of the categories. Okay. So if you go up to the, I just want to refresh you on the three categories. So you have, keep going. The first category is under number, is number, what, don't move, public healthcare facilities and providers. That's category number one. Okay. So you have to have one of those if you were to choose to do this as a council. Now go down to the next slide. Sorry about this. Consumers, you'd have to have one consumer and one other stakeholder, community stakeholder, which includes a list there. And then you could choose two more, because you're five, from any one of the categories, as long as you have one from each of these. Okay, now you can scroll down to the next slide. Scroll down to the next.
Does it have to be equal between elected and non-elected? Or can it be heavier non-elected?
Heavier non-elected.
Okay.
Keep going. Oh, I'm sorry. Can be heavy, it can be at least as many non-elected. Sorry. That may be on the first slide. I'm so sorry. If you gave me control, I could stop having you, go back up one. Okay, the membership. It says somewhere in here about the number of members. Maybe one more up. I don't think so, though. Keep going. Yeah. You know, okay, go down. There's one where it says the numbers. Has to be at least an equal number. Keep going.
We're getting dizzy.
You're getting, yeah, I just want to make sure that we have it accurate. Next slide, please. Okay, and then you need to have a tribal representative we already talked about. So you have to have one from each of the categories, plus you can have two others. But you have to have at least the same number of, of non-electeds as electeds. Okay. And, yeah, you could have more than that if you wanted, I believe. Okay, next slide. That may be it. So if you appoint other electeds, if you appoint other electeds, let's say you appoint the mayor to your, to the Board of Health, you can't have more electeds than non-electeds. Not only, not only counting the council members, but any other elected official you put on there. there. So any decision by the Board of Health related to the setting or modification of permit, licensing, and application fees may only be determined by the city and county elected officials on the board. So the non-electeds can't do that.
So the current, when FAC members are appointed, what is that current process?
So when their term ends, we seek a, if it's a represented person, we ask the, like, we'll ask, when Tracy's term comes to an end, we would ask Peace Health for a representative, just to recommend a representative.
Okay, and so who is "we" and who would make that decision?
Our department would do that. We would reach out.
Your department?
Well, with FAC, with FAC leadership, we would reach out, yeah.
Okay. And so who would make, who's the body that makes that final decision on who?
You are.
We are. But we take your recommendation.
Yes.
Okay.
We take the recommendation, but it's you make the final decision.
So would that change? I mean, with the, with the different model? That, I mean.
You could still solicit a representative if you chose to do so.
Okay, but we're not required to.
You might, as a council, that doesn't mean anybody following you would do the same thing.
Michelle had her hand up, so what's, what do you need?
Hi. So for those on FAC, those for, like, Southwest Washington Medical Center, those representatives, FAC reaches out and says we have an opening. They are appointed by FAC. The Board of Health gets those. They go to you as the Board of Health. They go onto the council agenda, but it's like a formality that you approve them, but they're really appointed by FAC. So just as FYI.
It's like, it's like most boards and commissions.
Yes.
Ones that council or Board of Health does approve of and does do the release, and we go through the whole process of, but for, not for all of them, because there are, there are a lot of them, but there are specific ones that FAC appoints.
Right, the represented ones, but the ones like the consumer representatives, or the doctor, or the nurse, those the council, yeah.
Correct.
We do a press release to seek those people, and then the council. Michelle is the expert on this, because she does the majority of work on this. I defer to her.
Are there other questions or concerns related to the structure? I guess just to maybe wrap up this section, I don't think we're making any particular recommendation at this time. We have more information, had a chance to deliberate on it. We can, the council slash Board of Health can ask Wasalfo to come and present us with some information, kind of from their perspective as statewide entity. And I know there are some counties that are lurking at changing the makeup of their Board of Health, so there's things that we could learn about how that process might even work.
Chair Marshall?
Yes.
Are we recommending that today? That, that something that should be on a future agenda? Or are we bringing that up tomorrow?
Either or both.
Okay, I would like to do a thumbs up on what you just proposed and see if we got a majority that wants to do that.
Could you repeat that again? What you, you know?
I think it was just to invite Wasalfo to come and give us an opportunity to talk about this and what the structures are from different entities around the state and what it might take if we decided we did want to make any kind of a switch.
I'm all for that, but I would like it to be a joint, if we can.
Hopefully do it at a Board of Health meeting.
Right. I would love to see the FAC work through this and actually give a recommendation to the council.
By the way, if it helps, I'm on the Wasalfo board. Is there any, one more slide? I'm sorry, because there may be a K, L, there may be an M. Is that it? Okay.
Counselor Young, can you repeat what you just proposed?
I'm just saying that I would, I would like the FAC to work through this. I mean, we can kind of work together to some degree, but I would like to get the FAC's official recommendation on, on what they think we should do.
About this model or the alternative model? Is that what you're asking, Counselor Young?
Right, yeah. And how we can close the gap on, just kind of all of the substance of this conversation, how we, how we can close the communication gaps that we're having.
So two requests. One is whether FAC would prefer the current model or the alternative model. And number two is communication pending any change, or if it stays the same, how FAC can communicate with Board of Health?
Yes.
Okay, I think we're good on that.
We do have some FAC members here. I'm wondering whether we can talk about the communication piece a little bit more now.
I think, yes, let's do that. But whatever might be out there for future decisions, we can figure out how to better work together now.
I just have to say, it's kind of ironic. This, this time, I don't want them to have an opinion about this. I want them to work through it, for sure. Normally, in a decision-making, I want their opinion on that decision, but this one, I just want to tell them, please go to work for us so that we can make a good decision for the county overall. Just kind of funny, ironic. Sorry.
Okay, one suggestion was that we meet like this quarterly and have a facilitated discussion. You know, and other things we talked about was like how to prioritize, maybe have a strategic, more of a strategic approach to the work. I'm not sure what the process is to get to that point. Go ahead.
Kind of goes back to what I tried to suggest before. It would be great if the suggestions of what we work on or prioritize came from you versus us. I'd rather the, the experts, the science determine what we work on versus what our voters, I mean, it should be both ways. But we would like to hear what you would like us to work on, and I know in the past maybe it's worked the opposite. So I'd just like to encourage that again.
I'm not sure that the Board of Health gave much direction to FAC.
I missed that comment. What was that?
I don't think the Board of Health gave much direction to FAC. I mean, does anyone have another opinion on that?
I mean, other than you being at the FAC meetings and Glenn, you being there when she's not there, this is the first time I've ever met these two gentlemen, which I appreciate. But yeah, I mean, just, that's the only interaction that I've really, in the two years, been here. I was going to ask, do you guys participate in the chip or the chow?
That's a great question. So our council at the time that we completed the Community Health Needs Assessment was given an opportunity to collaborate. I don't know that any of the council members at that time drew down on that opportunity, but right now, our Community Steering Committee members are comprised of community members representing different priority populations in our community. So it's comprised wholly and fully of community partners and leaders who represent the interests of populations who are currently most disproportionately impacted in terms of health outcomes, so we can further center the priorities and needs of communities that could benefit from that power transfer and decision-making the most. So right now, the council don't have roles in decision-making and what that looks like. However, the Steering Committee, on behalf of our priority populations and communities participating, could bring forward policy recommendations to FAC and to the Board of Health. And so the subgroups are convening quarterly right now. There's an all-group Steering Committee meeting scheduled for June that's in person. And following that June meeting, we're going to come to Board of Health to provide a presentation about efforts that have been happening since the group began implementing their goals, and then have dialogue about what's working, what's not, why, exploring the contextual factors, and then bringing forward to the council any relevant decision-making opportunities in terms of policy or allocation of resources that could benefit those four priority areas and the goals outlined in the theory of change.
Okay. What, the reason I ask that is just, I mean, in my mind, not a decision-making role in that, but just from an informational role of being involved in that at that level, probably would give you good insight of what the community is talking about. I mean, with, with my tribal council, I always say, you know, are we on the right road? I'll tell you how fast and the direction and everything that we're going, but I just want to know from my council standpoint, am I on the right road? Are we, from a staff level, from the community level, thinking what the council is thinking at that time? And if you, if we do all that work ahead of time, and then we find out we're supposed to be on I-5 and we're on I-205, there's a lot of wasted time and effort that went in that. And to be able to say, yeah, you're on I-5 and you need to be on I-5. Now you tell me how to get to Centralia the fastest and the easiest way. That's the staff's part to do that. But just to get you guys more involved, I guess, to hear, maybe not making decisions at that point, but just involved, that's kind of the, I mean, I really appreciate today, because I think it's been a good conversation to have, and I'm getting to understand a little bit more of what you guys are struggling with from your standpoint of, you know, you get presented at the Board of Health meeting, something that you might not even really know what's been going on, or what the, you know, Sue does from being at the meetings. But the rest of you, you know, it's probably new information on that day, for a lot of you, where I think more involvement, more communication, even if it's not every month, I think is a really good thing to make sure we're all kind of on the right road and we're talking the same language.
Really great suggestions, and I think with those steering committees, I don't know if it'd be possible just to go and listen, you know, not to get a condensed report back, but, but I wouldn't want to be in a position to intimidate anybody who is participating that. But sometimes just hearing directly from people what their experience is really valuable.
And to that point, to ensure that public health as the technical support function and facilitator convening the Steering Committee, anytime we have a question, we just ask, and we defer the decision-making power to the group. And so we can always offer up the question and say, hey, our county counselors are really interested in coming and being a part and listening about the dialogue and your work towards achieving these goals. How does that sound? Right? So there's a lot of just practical benefit in regular communication and not making assumptions, but I'm sure that our Steering Committee members would love the opportunity specifically to meet with you all in your current roles as counselors. There were some circumstances the last time we came before a counselor that resulted in harm, and there needs to be accountability for that. And that's something that we always have an opportunity to explore, what those relationships look like. So that would be something in this context, using this example, that I would want to hold center and be mindful that it may take additional one-to-one conversations or efforts at repair and relationship building before the Steering Committee would entertain that gesture of having the council attend. It would depend. So when, I fully believe that we should still explore that, because so many of the goals in the Health Improvement Plan are related to power redistribution and collective community civic engagement and decision-making to promote health across some of the more sector-based priorities like education and mental health.
Great, thanks for that thoughtful response. And I think it's very, it can be just very intimidating to come before the council. You know, we're elevated. It's not a user-friendly format at all. And in as much as we can break down some of those, that intimidation and barriers and build some trust, however that can come about, it'd be great. Any other thoughts? When's our next Board of Health meeting, anyway? Oh. Good. I'm all over it. Any? Oh.
Wait, you're going to hit on the street?
Yeah.
Is that allowed?
Yes.
Any other thoughts? Takeaways?
No, thank you for willing to engage with us and have a conversation with us. I think this was incredibly informative. I sit on the P-FAC, wait, the FAC. I just haven't had the chance to attend the first meeting. I was at a different commitment this past month, but I will, obviously, moving forward. So I am excited to continue working with you all and learning from you and, and hearing your, your advice and recommendations for policy decision-making that I think, I'm sure, with, you know, with your experience and expertise, will be incredibly valuable for our community. Because at the end of the day, we really do care about our community, and this is why I'm proud to say that I'm part of this council, and so, because we, we care.
I agree, and the process is that there are a lot of, there are a few of us on each committee, and we are representatives of our committee on those boards. And what we do is we have a committee report period each week where we can talk about whatever committee we learned a little bit about. So if you had directive for us as a whole, you could speak through the counselors who are representatives, and they could bring it to an action at a council meeting during that or any other process. But this is just step one. We do want to have more interaction as, as much as possible, knowing that we all have, you know, second jobs and stuff like that as well. But we want to improve the process, and I'm really looking forward to seeing if there is a better model of how we do it, can do it differently and better to serve the public needs. I'm really excited about the council we have, and I really enjoy working with this team. And I'm really excited that you all are part of the process and helping serve your community and your, and your interests. So thank you for what you do.
Are we closing up here? Oh.
I don't know. We can do, I mean, it seemed like there was a lull in the conversation, but.
Just one, one real quick comment, if I may, and same thing, I agree completely with my colleagues up here. Appreciate all that you do. You know, just, for me, the big thing is, is we kind of talked about our different boards and commissions, and I think this one is different than all the rest of them. Because all the rest of them, you know, essentially, they're, you know, they're bringing about recommendations, you know, they represent the council as a whole on that group, whereas the FAC is different, because we're the board. And whereas the FAC is different because we're the Board of Health and we're the ultimate decision-makers on that. And so there needs to be a much higher level of connection between the council and the FAC than the council and the majority of our other boards that we have seats on.
Just, we summarize next steps where we're at. Looking to you, I'm sorry. Both do it.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not quite sure what our next steps are, except that I feel like everyone's committed to have more dialogue back and forth and re-encourage your recommendations to come forward to us. And in as much as we have specific topic areas we'd like more information on, we'll seek out your advice. And I guess the other takeaway would be in addition to the Board of Health meetings that we would perhaps quarterly have a forum where we can just more informally have a give and take. I don't know, we talked about prioritizing issues and a global approach to things, but maybe we can just keep talking about those ideas as we go forward. Dr. Melnick, did you want to add anything?
A minimal to maybe having a short, we don't have to have a long retreat like today, but having another joint meeting three months from now?
Yep. I think.
So we'll, we'll go ahead and maybe a two-hour meeting or something.
That sounds good.
Okay, the other, the other question I have is, should we, I know that, should we potentially explore having Board of Health meetings at a time other than 8:30 in the morning and maybe explore having, once in a while, having a, I don't know whether it would be easier for FAC members to get there, but having a Board of Health meeting in like at 6:00 PM, that might be harder. I don't know. Doesn't sound promising from the folks who are here.
I think that's a quest, a question that can go back to the.
We can ask. Any asks of our department besides those two things? In the meantime, how are we going to explore the model? What's the next step for exploring the model situation?
Well, Counselor Young suggested that the FAC take it up and come back with a recommendation to us. And Wasalfo could be a resource to the FAC if you wanted to follow up with them. And maybe our council slash Board of Health will seek out some guidance from Wasalfo as well.
How would you feel?
I guess that would come back to a Board of Health meeting. We could do it at that forum. A Board of Health meeting and have Wasalfo there for like a short work session to talk about who does what in the county or in the state and what a transition might even look like.
So when, just to make sure, so when you say Wasalfo, I could invite our Wasalfo director, Jamie Boden, to come to a FAC meeting or come to a Board of Health meeting. Is that who you were thinking of? Because we have a board and we have a board chair, but Jamie Boden is our, is our managing director of Wasalfo. Is that who you?
Probably. I'm not sure. I don't know everyone's name.
I would just, just ask him who would be the best person to come. I'm sure there's certain people that have a little more knowledge in this than others, for sure. And then as far as the next steps, also making sure that we get more detailed working with Michelle on reports and how that's distributed to the council when the FAC does meet.
I think in the past, the recent past, it's been, Wasalfo has met the evening before the Board of Health meeting and it's been generally that same information that comes to FAC, would I say? Yeah. Okay, I'm getting make a step at this point. So yes, the FAC meeting is the night before and then there's the Board of Health meeting.
So that may be something that the, that the FAC can go over too, is the timing on that. I mean, if we don't see the meeting the night before and then it's coming back, it's, I mean, I guess it doesn't matter if it's the same information, but if there's, you know, I just same feel like when we had the Board of Health meeting, some more information we can have, the better. So I don't know if a gap between Board of Health and FAC might be beneficial, something that, that you can work through.
Why don't we add this to the discussion at our next FAC meeting? Mallory, you have notes on this? And Michelle? Okay, great, thank you.
I just didn't want to lose the fact that we agreed as a council to look at the structure and have at a future meeting some sort of consideration of a decision, one way or the other, whether we're going to change the structure. So where is that discussion going to potentially happen? And then when would, would it follow up with a meeting on one of our council time agendas? I just wanted to make sure this doesn't get lost because we sometimes make decisions and.
Thanks. I know we do. Things do get lost or confused. Here's what I think the direction is, that the FAC will take it up as a topic and they may invite someone from Wasalfo to answer any questions. And I would suggest at a Board of Health meeting, a recommendation or a report come back to us and we could also invite someone from Wasalfo in case the Board of Health had some questions directly for them. How's that sound?
That sounds great.
What about them?
What, what do you all think? Are there nods? We usually do a thumbs up thing here. If we get most people thumbs up, that means it's good. If there's a thumbs down, we discuss it more.
There's a thumbs up, too.
Can I clarify something? So when you say change the structure, I was going to ask this earlier. Are you talking about dissolving P-hac or FAC and then changing the way the Board of Health is structured?
What, we were given an alternative with that new law of a different way to structure how we make decisions. So just open-ended and we're hoping to get your recommendation of what you think would be the best path forward, whether the current structure, just strengthening that is the best option or to look at this other model as a way to go. Yep.
One thing I've learned about this board that we have right now is they're very deliberative. So I think make no assumptions about what direction we might go because we'll still be asking questions and want to consider your input.
I would just point out that the FAC has that deliberation, what they'll be deliberating as to whether they continue on FAC or not. So that might enter into their approach.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure if we're able to restructure the Board of Health and also have a FAC. So that might be a question for Wasalfo, if there's such an entity out there or if we would be defying state law, if we tried to do something like that. But I guess in my mind, I think that potentially we could still have both.
I think that's a question for the county prosecuting attorney actually as well. Because, because the role of both and the, the structure of a Board of Health and/or FAC is in that statute. So I think, so if the question is, can we have a new, go, go to the other board model and have a FAC that has the same functions as FAC has in the, in the statute, I think we would need our prosecuting attorney to answer that question. We can ask, that's, that's an easy, that's an easy ask. I'll just reach out to Amanda Michaelbrink. She's our attorney and I could probably get the answer pretty quickly. She's in this building. I can see if she's in her office after we're done.
I wanted to thank you again for your thoughtful questions and the desire to, to make sure that we're communicating and that you really recognize the responsibility of this role. This is a time check or date check, which is usually not my strength, but we normally meet tonight and we're not because of the retreat today. So it'll be, if we get the presenter or get more information at our next FAC meeting, it may be, hopefully we have it in the next one, but it may be a couple of months.
We're used to snail's pace, so we're used to snail's pace. This is government we're talking about here, but no, appreciate that.
Okay, I feel like we've gone as far as we can go for today. So thank you all for your participation. Nice to see everyone. And we'll see, see you next time.